McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michel and Amy.
Here.
And for the recording, Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Eric Klein.
Here.
Thank you. Very good. If you all would rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda, and I'm not aware of any changes.
A favor approval.
A motion. Do we have a second? Motion, a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is citizen presentation. This is an opportunity for citizens to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks to see if there's anyone online and we wait for anyone here to approach the podium, let me just remind everyone of our standards here. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Very good. Pete, do we have anyone online for an item not on the agenda?
For those who are online, you can get our attention by using the raise hand function. If you are using the Zoom app on your computer or tablet, go down to the bottom of your screen and you will see the reactions emoji. Click on that. From that window, you can select raise hand. If you're participating by phone this evening, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and then unmute yourself at the appropriate time by pressing star six. Your honor, there are no hands going up at this time.
Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to address the council on item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one rising or moving toward the podium, we will then move on to the consent items, which requires a resolution.
Move to resolution.
Thank you, Ted. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And then clerk post the vote.
Aye for me, Matthew.
And our consent items are approved, five to zero. First item we have this evening is a public hearing on a zoning ordinance amendment regarding flood control. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, public notice was published in the Des Moines Register on June 1st, 2022. And then at the June 9th council meeting, it was continued until tonight.
Thank you. And just for those of you new to the process, Amanda will give us a presentation here and then we'll provide the opportunity for a public comment. During the public comment period, it'd be helpful if there was a spokesperson who would like to speak for the group. That would be helpful. We'd like to avoid everyone saying the same thing over and over. We could ask for a show of hands after someone makes a presentation if there's support for that. And then one further clarification, as our city manager to make that as far as the number of votes requiring to take this off the table and to move it past the first reading.
Yes, your honor, and the legal counsel is en route. Should be here in a minute. So for the actions tonight, from the June 9th meeting, the city council tabled first consideration of this ordinance to tonight's meeting. And so to have that consideration, the council would need to bring that first consideration off the table. So it's just bringing it off the table. That's a simple majority vote to do so. And then the first consideration of the ordinance related to the flood flood control chapter of the zoning ordinance would be up for consideration, that first consideration. Following further research of only Plan and Zoning Commission's action last week, where they did not recommend the ordinance amendment, further research was done. Typically, when we have a negative recommendation from Plan and Zoning Commission related to rezonings of property, which has been our past experience, it would require a super majority vote of the city council to approve any consideration of such ordinance. With this particular flood control proposal or this ordinance amendment being a text amendment of the actual zoning ordinance itself, not a rezoning of property, it does not require the super majority vote. It is a simple majority to move those considerations forward. That was following additional work by legal counsel from the city's code and making sure that there wasn't any state law that superseded that code. And I feel like I'm representing that correctly.
Correct.
So there's your clarification, your honor.
Very good. And again, the process, if the, if it were to pass the first reading tonight, there would have to be a second reading at the next council meeting and then a third reading. It would have to pass all three readings in order to be enacted. So if it were to pass tonight, there would still be the opportunity to discuss at the next meeting, make changes, same thing at a third, third reading. Anything to add, councilor Matt?
Now, if there are substantial changes to the amend, to the proposed amended ordinance, then you start the process all over again. As they, if, if there's tweaks along the way, essentially, then you are correct in the procedure of three readings in that order.
Thank you. Now, Amanda.
Good evening. So I guess tonight we will start with a quick primer on pre and post firm development. So that is a situation we have that's largely going to come up throughout this discussion tonight is pre-firm homes were those that were built before the first flood insurance rate maps or flood hazard boundary maps, depending on the timeframe, were adopted by FEMA. That date for Clive is November 1st, 1979. So any homes that were permitted for construction prior to November 1st of 1979 would be pre-firm, which means they were largely built before any of those floodplain regulations came into existence. So you can see the map here, we have pre-firm homes coded or properties coated in orange. And then anything that was issued a building permit after November 1st, 1979 is considered post-firm and would have been held to those standards that were required for the floodplain regulations at the time they, they were adopted by FEMA and then after FEMA's adoption by the city after November 1st, 1979. So we have two, two kind of separate categories of properties at play here. This map does include any property that the floodplain touches that has a building on it, not just properties that actually have the structure included in the floodplain. That is how our map data is formatted. So some of the homes that are shown and properties that are shown on here tonight are not actually impacted by the changes we're going to discuss. This just gives you an idea of the pre and post firm nature of the development and how we got here today. So the impact of the proposed ordinance, which is to modify the current flood control chapter to be in conformance with the new prerequisite for Clive's participation in the CRS program. But the impact of that ordinance is there are 125 properties in that Indian Hills neighborhood that have at least a portion of the home being located in the floodplain, not just the property, but the actual home being in the floodplain. Staff estimated from the data that we have that about 45 properties were originally built with a floodproof basement. But due to changes in that base flood elevation since 1979, the maps have been adopted or re-adopted twice, once in 92 and once in 2019. And with those, we've seen base flood elevations rise and get higher. So from those 45 properties, many of them are most likely non-conforming from the information we have on record. We can confirm some of them are non-conforming for sure. Other ones, we've had to use the best available information we have because not all the properties have an elevation certificate on file. So we estimate that there are about 15 properties currently meeting the floodproof basement requirement at one foot above the current base flood elevation adopted in 2019. If this ordinance amendment is passed and the requirement for a two-foot floodproofing above base flood elevation is adopted, we estimate that six of the properties would continue to meet that two foot above the base flood elevation for their existing basements.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As we go, just so I don't get lost. For those that met the requirements prior to, right? Now we're saying you haven't met it. We're not, but I mean, the floodwaters, the ordinance is going to say that. Have we ever grandfathered those in, in the past?
They are grandfathered.
They are grand.
They today are permitted non-conforming. And no changes are required for any property until they are either substantially damaged or substantially improved.
At the 50.
Yep. Once you hit that trigger, grandfathering is no longer on the table.
Okay.
No follow-up question on that. Is that in line with the other code requirements that we have, or is that different from the grandfathering aspect?
That is in line with our other changes. So if we had a house that, for instance, was built in a setback, nothing to do with floodplain and it burned down, they would not be able to rebuild in the setback without getting a variance.
So the only, the only issue I have with that, right, example is the setback was the setback. Nothing, you know, the homeowner couldn't do anything about that, right? I mean, the flood or the flood, you can't do anything about it. It grows on you, right? The other one's a little different. So I'm just keeping that in my head.
Sure.
For, for a decision is the flood is changing that whole piece of it, you know? Okay.
So what the ordinance is proposing is that floodproof basements will continue to be allowed by right, but utilities must be elevated outside of the floodproofed area. When staff had previously brought this, the situation before council that we were going to have to make changes to remain in compliance with the CRS program back in April, and we discussed the impacts that would have. At that time, our understanding from FEMA was that we would actually be required to remove the basement allowances and then put those in a variance process. So through additional work that staff has done with FEMA, we have been able to come to this less restrictive ordinance revision that would allow basements to go back by right, floodproof to two foot above the base flood elevation instead of the current one foot above base flood elevation and moving those utilities out of the basement floodproofed area. I would like to clarify at this time that the split level type homes that have dirt partially around the foundations are not considered basements for flood control purposes. The county assessor does typically indicate that those properties have a basement for the way they do property assessments, but that is not coming to play for the flood control. So there would be no change to those properties with this proposed amendment. They fall under the current code requirement, which for homes without a basement in the floodplain is that they will be elevated to one foot above the base flood elevation. So similar to the homes with a basement, they have to be floodproofed to one foot above under the current requirement. So the difference we're looking at in the ordinance change really is going from one foot basement floodproofing to two-foot basement floodproofing in the event of substantial damage or substantial improvement. And then also having to relocate those utilities out of the basement if there was substantial damage or substantial improvement. I believe there's been some misunderstanding with some of the residents that the city was going to come in after this was approved and require them to redo all of their utilities and elevate those today. That is not the case. These changes, as Councilmember McCoy pointed out, these properties are permitted non-conforming and they can continue to be just the way they are until substantial damage or substantial improvement takes place.
Amanda, could you just give us a typical example of a, say, a $250,000 home that has the floodwaters come in two feet above the BFE? What's the likely amount of damage that would be done there? Would that be more than 50% or less? Do you have an idea of that?
So if it's a basement that's inundated due to that process, we're not talking about two foot of water in the home anymore. You're talking about the entire basement would fill with water and then you would get an additional, likely additional two feet above wherever that base flood elevation is into the home. Because basement is functioning, a hole in the ground, when it rains, holes in the ground fill up. The same kind of situation would happen here. So in that situation with a basement, you would be almost certainly looking at a substantial damage. At that point, you would have your utilities fully inundated, assuming they're in the basement, as I believe basically all of these properties would be today, having those utilities in the basement. And that does, can cause very significant damage. You would also have the structural impact from the hydrodynamic and hydrostatic pressures of the basement filling with water. For the 2018 flood is an example, this can happen. A gas main was breached in a home in Urbendale and that duplex actually exploded in 2018. If you all remember hearing that in the news at the time. So those are the kind of level of damages you could be looking at in the event that the utilities were inundated during the flood. So there are a few other minor revisions as part of the ordinance change tonight to keep us in compliance with the CRS program as well. It would be that residential accessory buildings and structures would also have to elevate utilities to one foot above the base flood elevation. So for instance, if you had a garage that was detached, which I don't believe any of these properties do, or if you had a shed that was detached that you had ran electrical services to and that was damaged and you went to put it back in the future, those services would have to be at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Additionally, for the non-residential structures.
Would that again be only in the event of that substantial loss?
Yes. Yep. If they either built a new structure today that, or after this would be passed, or if it was substantially damaged, substantially improved, not for the home.
Okay. So it'd be the structure separately then?
Yes. And then for non-residential structures, the requirement continues to allow them to use floodproofing. But it is specific that they would be elevated or floodproofed to one foot above the base flood elevation. And then the terms use and structure have largely been replaced throughout the ordinance with the term development. That was at the direction of the Iowa DNR. It didn't actually impact the meaning of any of the regulations. It's just a minor language change that they've implemented. So I talked briefly earlier about the pre and post firm properties. So what we had prior to 1978 in Clive was no floodplain development regulations existed. In 1979, those floodplain regulations were adopted by the city. And then in 1981, Clive was granted a residential basement exception from FEMA that is what initially allowed the construction of floodproof basements in the floodplain. There are very few communities across the country, 53, that have ever been granted a basement exception. So the other 99.75% of NFIP communities cannot have basements in the floodplain under any circumstances. Pre-firm properties, of course, may still exist in those locations, but if they were substantially damaged or substantially improved, they would not be able to go back with a basement at all. And then in 2022, a new prerequisite for the CRS program came into effect. What we've talked about here, you already have some familiarity with that. And so that is why we're here today to stay in compliance with that program. That's why this change is being made now. But we do have data that is supporting that there are increasing flood risks. And staff believes that this policy, regardless of staying in compliance with the CRS program, is a prudent and good public policy to adopt. We do know that those BFE requirements or the BFE levels have continued to increase. This is a real example from the Indian Hills neighborhood, 1597 Northwest 90th Court. The adjacent grade at the time of construction was 840.4 for the elevation. That may have changed since then if they'd done any gardening or dirt work around the home, but that's what's listed on the elevation certificate. The BFE in 1979, when they were originally adopted, was 841.28 feet. In 1992, you saw that slightly increased by 200ths to 841.3. In 2019, you saw a pretty significant increase. That new BFE is 844.74 feet. So we're looking at about a three and a half foot increase in those modeled flood depths from the time the flood maps were originally adopted. You can see this property's basement window is located at 844.79 feet. So they are 500ths below the current 100-year base flood elevation. And with modeling that the city has had completed through the 2018 mitigation benefits estimator, which is part of a Silver Jackets project, currently we're in phase two of advancing that data. We see that that modeled future base flood elevation actually increases to 845.45. So we're getting not quite another foot of increase, which would show this property being inundated through the basement windows.
Amanda, you lost me currently in phase two of new data. What is that?
Yep. So the, the information that this future modeling came from, we're continuing to work with partners to refine that and get it to a finer level of detail. So this comes from the 2018 reports that were completed that was at a higher level. Certain areas have been defined to really drill down into that. And that's part of the process for the city to apply for federal funding to advance some of our other floodplain goals, like the flood prone property buyout program area.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, in fact, that the Silver Jackets program was to anticipate what that future developed watersheds, considering the conditions going to be, so we understand what the developing flood risk is going to be. And that's what these numbers represent.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. And that looked at a 40-year horizon for development.
Okay.
Doug, did you have something to add?
Yes, I was just going to mention in terms of the, the work that the Corps of Engineers and FEMA have been working with us on, it is looking at both the impacts of future development within the watershed, which we know will continue to exist. It also takes a look at various weather or climate related changes using best available science for the Midwest region, looking at downscaling those climate risk models to have a better understanding of what those impacts might be again to this watershed. So the work that, that is being done is trying to help the city be in a position to protect our current and our future buildings that are within the floodplain so that we're not in this situation of every 10 or 15 years of kind of reassessing and saying, gosh, the flood conditions or the flood risk are increasing. What are we going to do with the, with the properties? We're trying to avoid being in the situation that we're in now within certain neighborhoods within the community.
Thank you, Doug. And so this is a summary of that 2018 data specifically for the Indian Hills neighborhood. So what we find with the current modeling that is the minimum NFIP mapped current existing firm is that there are 66 structures that showed that they would actually have damage in the event of a 100-year flood. For that future model, it, that number increases to 112. The average depth increase of that 100-year flood was 2.2 feet across this neighborhood. And then you can see, I'm not going to read to you all the numbers, but you can see the increases for those modeled structure damages, content damages, displacement damages. That one looks specifically at kind of those social impacts. So people having to relocate, businesses not having employees, people having to shut down. A lot of those kinds of more social concerns were generally categorized as displacement damages. And then you can see the 100-year averages for those changes to the damage. So the 100-year structure damages between the current and the future, on average, those damages increased by about $36,000 per impacted property. So staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance and continue a high level of participation in the CRS program. I know there are a lot of neighbors here that would like to speak on this tonight, so I will let them largely speak for their own concerns. Those were summarized in the staff report. But I would just like to emphasize that the CRS program is a great program that we're part of, but it is not truly the primary driver here to only maintain those insurance premium discounts. There is a life safety component to this, as we just talked about with those increasing flood risks. And that truly is an important component that should be taken into consideration. We are also seeing through the new risk rating 2.0 that is FEMA's new underwriting for those NFIP premiums, that flood insurance premiums in Clive have increased for 142 of our policies of the 193 that were included in that 2022 renewal cycle. So we are expecting that those will continue to increase. There was a cap on the annual increase percentage for those policies. But those are going to continue to go up over the coming years until they meet that full risk-based underwriting. And so right now we have a lot of floodplain properties that do not have policies for their insurance premiums. So that would then also be additional properties that could be brought into the program at the time of sale in the future. Those insurance premiums or floodplain insurance is required typically on any property that holds a mortgage. We know we have a lot of long-term property owners in the city. So as they age out of their homes or choose to move, those will go back on the market and additional residents and property owners would be required most likely at that time to hold a flood insurance policy. So it is likely that we see the number of policies increasing and the current premiums that they are paying will continue to increase as well. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you have for me.
I had a quick question on the insurance piece that you were just talking about. You mentioned the risk 2.0 rating.
Yes.
You mentioned that there's a catch-up or like basically a period in time where do you, do you have any insight into what that, that final percentage looks like compared to the premium today?
So I can't tell you for each property how much is going to increase. I believe it was capped at an 18% increase annually. So, you know, five or six years, people will mostly be at that full risk-based premium.
Thank you.
And is this CRS program, is it an all or nothing? So you either adopt this or we lose what we've gained from the, from the past? Or is this just to go to the next level?
So this is a prerequisite to be class eight or higher. We are currently a class five and had intended to apply for class four at our next recertification visit. So what would happen is if we do not adopt this amendment, the city would be bumped down to class nine. At that time, that would have to be evaluated if it was still worth participating in the program with the staff time and everything necessary to do that. The insurance premiums would be, the discounts would be a 5% discount instead of the 25% discount people are currently receiving.
And if I remember when we did this correctly, we did it mainly for the residents to get that discount, right? I mean, there were other benefits to the city, I suppose, but not city properties.
So that actually predates my employment with the city. We began in 2016 and I started in 2017. So I would have to ask Doug to chime in if he's still available.
Certainly. The direct benefits to the city from being in the program are relatively minor. Really, the value of it to the city is in the process itself. So going through the CRS program, it is a performance-based program. So the city is going through the efforts of documenting and demonstrating good stewardship of property within the floodplain, taking advantage of best available information, taking advantage of best available controls, et cetera. So it in essence kind of forces us to be the best stewards that we can with respect to minimizing flood risk with properties in the city of Clive. But in terms of any direct benefit or savings to the city itself, the program does not offer any of that.
I would add to that, given what I know from my policy work on behalf of the Rebuild Iowa office from 2009 to 2011, there has been consideration given at both the state and federal levels to kind of incenting communities to get involved in the community rating system program by looking at reinvesting less in damaged properties if the cities aren't participating. So while that doesn't exist today, that is a very real potential in the future. So it's another good reason for the communities to look at participating.
And just to follow up on that, we definitely see that occurring in some of the flood hazard mitigation grant applications that we are looking at. We have not applied specifically to the programs that use CRS as a condition or credit. But we do anticipate that the CRS program and our class rating will give us some additional points, if you will, or some additional credit on a few of the applications that we anticipate making in the coming months.
And those applications Doug's referring to largely advance the flood prone property buyout program.
I know, I know we've been focusing on the CRS aspect and kind of the economic aspects, but you mentioned there's a public safety issue here as well. I'd, I'd like to hear more if there's been any studies or, or, you know, like an impact analysis on if we don't do this ordinance and, you know, we know that those floodwater I'd I'd like to hear more if there's been any studies or, you know, like an impact analysis on if we don't do this ordinance and, you know, we know that those flood water levels are rising. Do we have any kind of idea what kind of impact that has on the community overall or even the neighborhood? Have we done any of that?
Yeah, so we have those. This previous slide has done that to see, you know, if basically if we do nothing, here's what the impacts could be. This modeled 5, 10, 25, 50, 100, 200, 500 and 1,000 year flood events. So it looked at small events up to very big events.
I'm actually thinking more along the lines of one of one of our residents, I think, brought to issue like the kind of the health issues that could be, you know, impacted by this. And I'm wondering if there's been any, you know, I know it's a little unfair to ask you right now.
Sure.
But if we could look into what is the potential health impact here and some of the, you know, some of the facilities we have in the area as well.
Yeah, I guess I don't know if you have specific health impacts you're thinking of. I can tell you that as things get inundated, they tend to have mold in them. Those have a lot of impacts. I don't know that we would have a way to quantify that outside of like this displacement damages kind of analysis that is part of the the studies that we already have.
I'm also thinking from just a resource availability, right? We all know that our our regional hospitals, you know, with COVID, we
Absolutely.
run. I'm not saying this would be that same situation, but it'd be good if we looked into what that potential impact could be in a worst case scenario.
Sure, we can try to find some information on that.
Well, we do have a modeling availability, right? Where we can see a real time modeling or a, you know, a simulated modeling of that water rising. I've seen it. We've used it before. I think it'd be impactful to see how that water flows in and in a I can't remember that it was FEMA that we used their system or Doug or who it was, but we could watch that rise and how far it went in the houses.
Doug, could you speak to that? I do where the
Yes, certainly. We have had quite a bit of partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers as well as FEMA and and state folks in advancing the modeling available for analysis for Walnut Creek because we have had continual impacts from flood events. Yes, we think we have pretty good modeling information available to be able to do things like the data that's on the slide here. It also gives us a really good opportunity to assess those future conditions, which again, are what make me the most concerned for the community because we are spending a substantial amount of time and energy and effort trying to mitigate the situation that we're currently in because we have had these flood risk changes brought on to us. I would like to see the city be in a position where we're using best available information and using the future conditions to help make better decisions today to prevent circumstances like we're in now 20 or 25 or 35 years from now as the watershed continues to evolve. We know the areas in Wake and Urban Dale and in rural parts of Dallas County are going to transition. They're currently transitioning about 400 acres per year from agricultural space to suburban landscape. That water is going to continue to come down on Walnut Creek and through the center of the city of Clive. We know those risks are real today. We know those risks are likely to be higher in the future. So we've continued to use the data that's available, continue to solicit every opportunity to partner with the Army Corps of Engineers, with FEMA, with with the Department of Homeland Security, with the state to make sure that we are making good, prudent and appropriate decisions for the future of the city.
Amanda, I have a quick question for you. One of the concerns of many residents of this neighborhood is the economic impact or the how this amendment would affect their homeowner, their home value. Did you address that?
Yeah, I know that concern has been raised. As I pointed out earlier, most of these homes are already permitted nonconforming and we have not seen you know, a decrease in sales in this area. Homes don't sit on the market for longer than they do in other parts of the community. The assessed values are not falling, sale prices are not falling. So staff does not believe that that is a likely situation to happen with a regulation change. Most of those homes are not really in that significantly different of a circumstance after this is adopted versus the regulations in place today because they're already below that one foot above the excuse me, above the base flood elevation. So it's for those properties largely the same situation and we are not seeing those kinds of negative impacts today.
Thank you.
Ted, do you have any questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I want to apologize to everyone in the chambers that I'm not there. I wanted to be there, but I tested positive for COVID this morning. So didn't want to risk anyone else. But, you know, I think it's fair to say we all like and appreciate the CRS program. We always have. I think it speaks well to our staff for for getting us involved in that and and getting us to where we're at to obtain the savings that our residents are able to achieve. You know, with that said, as I've kind of researched this topic this week, and Amanda, please feel free to correct me if I state any facts that are incorrect. But, you know, we talked about the 25% discount versus a 5% discount. Well, if we apply that to the average homeowner, and again, this this can vary by home, you know, price point, all those kind of things, but just on average, the annual saving that 25% is $200 a year. Okay. The average savings at the 5% is $50 a year. So the delta that we're talking about for our residents is $150 savings a year. So I think we need to keep that in mind as far as the scope of this, you know, even conceding the idea that a an owner is going to be in their home for 10 years. We're talking $1,500 savings over a 10 year period. So it this is not something from an economic standpoint that is, you know, when you look at a cost benefit analysis, I don't know that that's decisive. And so I think we need to keep that in mind. Amanda, can you explain why P&amp;Z voted this down? What were their reasons?
Sure, they made that easy for me because they actually stated after they voted no for the members that did largely their response was the neighbors and residents that showed up at the meeting very clearly stated that they would rather not have the amendment approved. And P&amp;Z was really focusing on the CRS program benefits. And we did talk about the kind of life safety concerns and those increasing flood risks. I didn't have the diagram and stuff that was prepared for council at that time. So that was their their main focus was that the residents that came were very clear that they preferred to keep the current requirements rather than change. And they felt since it's a voluntary program for at least their scope of what they look at for the zoning based stuff, that they would defer to the residents.
Okay, and all that makes
We also did not have a full board at that meeting. We had four, five present of our seven.
Okay, well, that makes sense. You know, on the on the life safety aspect of this, I guess I'm going to push back a little bit. And the the primary driver for why it's in front of us today is because we're trying to maintain that CRS rating. So that is economic. Now, are there some are there some safety benefits to this? Absolutely, of course there are. But that's something we could do at any time. We could do it next year. We could do it in five years or we can choose not to do it depending on, you know, the studies that are done. You know, we're doing the two feet, the one foot to two feet because that's what FEMA is requiring for us to maintain that rating and and to maintain that saving for our residents. And so you know, again, we have some safety regulations in place today at the one foot. If we want to improve that, I'm definitely open to looking at that. But it doesn't have to be done today to do that, right? The reason why we're doing it is to maintain the rating and that is economic in nature.
Yes, the sensitive nature of this is that it would have to be in place before our five year recertification visit, which does happen later this year for the CRS program. This isn't a new topic that staff has been looking at. Again, this data is from a 2018 study, so we have been looking at this for some time. So we do think it is a good policy to move forward with.
Doug, did you have something to add?
I was just going to indicate similar to what Amanda stated that this isn't something that is entirely new for us from a staff level perspective. The knowledge of the increasing flood risk within Walnut Creek is something we've been dealing with for a number of years. And and if you go back and look at the Walnut Creek Watershed Master Plan that was completed and then also some of our additional work related to stormwater and our comprehensive plan, those questions around increasing the preboard above the base flood elevation. So our current is one foot. But knowing what we know in terms of these increasing flood risk, one foot's probably not the right number. Two feet may not be the right number, but it's certainly in the right direction in terms of, again, this this longstanding concern with the the rising flood levels in Walnut Creek. So we certainly are taking advantage of having the conversation at this particular point because there was an opportunity to leverage this particular consideration for the CRS program. But the idea of having a higher regulatory standard for properties, floodplain properties in the city of Clive is certainly something from a public policy standpoint should be considered by the city. We just have not brought it to you specifically for further discussion.
Thanks, Doug. Could you or Amanda just give us a quick overview of how the flood insurance coverage would work in the case of, say, a 100 year flood? What does that cover as far as what the property owner would have to deal with?
Doug, you're probably more familiar with the specifics of that. I can tell you that flood insurance would only come into play during a flood event. So would not cover if a home was damaged from fire or tornado, any other cause. There are limited coverages for contents that are kept in basements. It's limited to things like your deep freeze and the food within it is covered. But there are not really much in the way of any contents coverage for basements. And there is a $30,000 increased cost of compliance that goes along with NFIP flood insurance policies that helps defray the costs of coming into into conformance with the floodplain regulations at the time if the property was damaged. Doug, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, just just a few things. Flood insurance, as Amanda indicated, only comes into to play if there is a flood condition. Now, the definition of a flood, it doesn't have to be a full Walnut Creek flooding. It simply has to be a flood event that affects at least two properties. So riverine flooding along Walnut Creek is certainly a thing we're most concerned with, but flood insurance would cover upland properties that maybe got impacted because of a overflowing detention basin or stream in a backyard, et cetera. But the purpose of the insurance coverage itself is to provide the ability to restore, repair, rebuild that existing condition just as a homeowner's insurance policy would. But as it relates specifically to those flood damages, as Amanda indicated, the the coverage is relatively limited for basements. And again, this is a basement anywhere. Not just in Clive or not just in in this particular neighborhood with the certified floodplain basements. But any basement has very limited coverage because of the nature of the the high probability of impact for areas below grade in a flooding condition. So it would help provide or restore some of the structural components of that basement. But anything that is related to finishes, you know, if you if you have a finished basement, the carpets and and the wall treatments and things of that nature are generally not covered expenses on a flood insurance. So again, for the most part, basements have very little coverage. This is for those types of of properties that have flood impacts on their first floors, if you will, and above. And in those cases, the insurance is there to help restore that property to its original pre flooded condition.
And Amanda, did you say there was an additional $30,000 that's available to assist with bringing in compliance?
Yes, that's the the increased cost of compliance or ICC that is included with flood insurance policies.
And just just one point on that, that additional program policy, the ICC, is available only in the event of substantial damage. So it has to be a fairly significant type of of impact to a property. If it is substantially damaged, there is this ability to use additional $30,000 for things such as elevating the house or moving mechanicals to a higher elevation, things that will help reduce the impacts of a future flood.
Thank you, Doug. Other questions for Doug or Amanda?
Couple of couple of quick questions. Yeah. So when we were, when you were just describing how that process works, if if it's, if only the basement is impacted, pretty limited coverage, it sounds like compared to if it hits the first floor, then something larger kicks in on the insurance policy. So if you have a situation where the only the basement is impacted, that 30,000 improvement, is that available as well? Or does that only kick in once it hits the, you know, potentially the first floor? And then the second part of that question is if it hits the first floor, is more of the basement covered as well? I know those are really specific insurance questions.
So the the basement limitations are around the contents of the basement. So if you start talking about the utility systems, the structural nature, that insurance will still be there for them. And then, of course, if it fills the whole basement and gets to the first floor, yeah, you're talking about probably a higher payout, but likely if the basement is fully inundated, you you very well may be at a substantial damage at that point just due to the structural strain that would put on a home.
Okay, so the the basement, even if that's the only one impacted structurally, it's the insurance is still there for that.
Yes, if it if it caused damage, it was more than, you know, just dry out the basement, that would still come into play.
Okay. And then one other question I have that's probably also a little unfair, but on the slide that you have in front of us, right? You've got current and future. And I know we talked a lot about that modeling data and how it's coming from 2018. Is there is there any thought on what that projected future timeline is, right? Are we talking 10 years from now or?
Yep. So what the what was modeled was the 40 year build out condition of the watershed. So we gathered all of our surrounding communities in the watersheds, future land use plans, and then looked at about a 40 year development horizon with that 400 acres per year coming online. So I would point out that 40 years is now closer than when these homes were built for the most part. So it seems like a really long horizon, but in we're when we're talking about the length of time for development, that's not actually all that long.
The other part that goes into the advanced modeling that we did do, not just the development condition, but we also looked at the changing rainfall intensity and frequency in that 2018 study. So both the development condition and the increased rainfall impacts because of you know, what has happened over the last 30 or so years went into this updated modeling. The phase two that was indicated early on is where we are advancing that level of modeling and and not just looking at the historical rainfall changes, but now starting to look at what the climate modeling is showing. So it is truly looking at both the future condition in terms of climate. And then we are applying continued develop growth within the watershed, the point of a full developed watershed so that we understand what that ultimate, if you will, or at least our best assumption of that ultimate floodplain might look like.
Michael?
Just to follow up on some of Ted's comments, I'm appreciate Ted's math on the 25% and 5% and actually impressed with his math. Well done Weaver. But can I, just to get a little bit more data on how that really works out and one of Doug's comments, what are the total houses in Clive, entire city?
Oh, gosh, the total number of homes. I don't have that number prepared for you. I do have the number of insurable buildings in the floodplain.
Yeah, that's not enough. Rough number?
About 4,500, about 4,500 homes.
Okay, that's close enough. Stick with me, Weaver. Houses affected by this ordinance?
There's approximately 125 that are, actually have some level of impact.
Okay. And then Doug, you alluded to some dollars of grant money you were seeking in the next few months, right, that were attached to CRS rating. Do you have a dollar amount that the city was going after for those grants? Rough numbers?
Sure. The overall grant that we've been looking at to accomplish the university flood buyout area is about $35 million. This first phase would be some portion of that amount, maybe three to $5 million of request. And as I said, this particular funding, which is the BRIC program, it does allow for the CRS rating of a community to be a qualifying or provide points in that application. Now, I do want to say that although those points are certainly helpful in our application when this is a nationally competitive program, I don't want to overstate that the points that would be available because of our CRS rating. It's not necessarily going to make or break the application. It makes it that it is beneficial to the city, particularly on a national competitive program, but it is not the end.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Mr. America, can I go back to something?
Yes, Ted, go ahead.
Thank you. So Doug, you mentioned that, you know, staff has been looking at this for some time, and I don't doubt that for an instant. I know you guys are on top of this, and I appreciate that. But, you know, again, if we want to look at this as a citywide change, I'm open to that because of the health and safety aspects to it. But that's a massive decision that we would have to make. And I know for me personally, I would need to know a lot more information before I go down that path, right? You know, how many homes are impacted? What's the average cost to each of those homeowners if something happens? You know, are we an island, or do our neighbors have similar policies? You know, we're not the only ones that deal with flooding in Clive. Other communities deal with it too. So do they have a similar policy? And if they all do, well, then, hey, that, maybe that makes sense. So I'm very open to that. It's just that you guys have been looking at this for a while, but we haven't. And I, I just, you know, I don't feel like we have enough information, especially when you look at the scope of what we're talking about from a cost benefit analysis, right? So.
Thanks, Councilman Weaver. I can answer one of those questions right now. Our neighbors do not have a similar policy because they don't have a basement exception. So their policy would have to be, if your home in the floodplain with a basement is substantially damaged, you may not rebuild it, or you shall not rebuild it with a basement. They would not have this additional flexibility that Clive has through the basement exception.
Okay, so that's interesting. So you're saying that a home, for example, Windsor Heights, who's in the floodplain, today, if they have a fire, they can't rebuild on a basement?
Correct. Assuming that fire caused a substantial damage.
Right, right, right. Same criteria. Okay, well, that's good, okay.
No, that's literally the same question I was gonna ask.
Scary. Other, other questions from the council for Amanda or Doug?
I do have one.
Susan?
I would like to understand what floodproofing to one foot above versus floodproofing to two foot above means. What, what is that floodproofing that accomplishes what we need to do?
So there are some specific engineer design requirements that are included in the ordinance. I am not a structural engineer, so I can't really get into the details of the impact that that has. But we would be looking at the increase of one foot of additional floodproofing, not the total cost of floodproofing. It would just be that incremental addition for going to two foot above the base flood elevation rather than one foot above.
And I can just add a little bit about the typical methodology that's been employed to get to a certified floodplain, certified floodproof basement. If you'll recall, you know, again, when we're talking about these homes that were being constructed in the mid to late 70s, the method for the construction of basements was principally block construction, a series of Lego blocks built up to create the basement itself. That system, although you can do some things to make it somewhat watertight, it leaks over time, as any of us that have had a basement with a block foundation wall knows. So principally, what happened is, in order to meet this certification, the construction converted to what we absolutely use as the standard today, which is a poured concrete foundation. Again, a little before its time in the mid to late 70s, but that was the primary method of compliance. Now, certainly, there's been a little bit more steel placed into that wall before it was poured, but principally, that is the method to achieve that certified floodproof basement condition. In this particular case, the idea of adding one foot to the construction of this new basement wall, that's not going to be substantial implication in the current environment. The idea of building nine-foot and 10-foot poured-in-place concrete reinforced walls is a relatively standard application in home construction nowadays.
Great, thanks.
Other, other questions from council? Hearing none, then we'll move on and entertain input from citizens. And if you would, come forward and identify yourself, name and address for the record. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, so come forward.
Thank you. My name is Dale Peterson. I live at 9421 Lincoln Avenue. And I've got kind of an unusual situation. My house was originally built as most of the neighborhood in 1977. In 1987, they did a, this is before I lived there, they did a dramatic remodel, about 50% of the house. So the one-foot regulation was input, I believe, in 1981. So with the addition they did in 1987, it complied with that. It was all certified, approved, and what have you. It's poured, and it's, it complied with the one foot above. And one of the things, the gentleman talked about what that means to be compliant, part of that is the lowest point of egress. In many cases, that's a basement window. So in my case, my basement windows are all above one foot, they're not above two feet. So the ordinance we're talking about would impact that. The more important thing to me is the, the stuff inside. I got two furnaces down there, I've got a home automation system. I bet $50,000 to $100,000 with the stuff that if, if my home were destroyed by anything or damaged 50 to 51% by anything but flood, I can deal financially some of that through the homeowner's policy. Typically, the homeowner's policy, and I suggest everybody talk to their insurance agents about this, but there's an ordinance and law endorsement. It typically covers anywhere between 10% and 25% or KPI, which is your dwelling amount for loss, if you have codes. So, you know, anybody's got an older house, code's changed, it's a good idea to have that kind of coverage. In my particular case, obviously, if this would go through, I would increase that. My problem is, even if I would get, you know, hit by adration, wind, or anything that damaged the house by 51%, I could get compensation for that, but I got no place to put it. If I gotta move two furnaces and everything bells up, I have a 32 underscore foot home, I have to put that on an upper level, I'm shrinking my home by a significant mark. I'm not, I'm losing a lot of value in my home. If it happens by flood, that's a different set of scenarios, because then it doesn't come into play at all. That would, you know, whatever I have in flood insurance is gonna cover that, but that's it. So the nominal gain benefit that I see for any of our homeowners is from a homeowner, from a flood insurance, 150, 200 bucks, that is nothing compared to the cost I'd have to have from the ordinance to moving up all the furnace. We're talking $50,000, $100,000, and the value, the loss of value of my property is decimated the value of the property. So this, to me, it's an absolute no-brainer. There's no benefit to any of us in the 125 group. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, thank you for your comments. And to eliminate the need for everyone to repeat that, is there anyone here in the audience that agrees with what he says? If so, raise your hand, just so we have a sense. Thank you. For the record, most everyone here is raising their hands, so. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this matter?
My name's Amy Pellegrin. I'm at 1593 Northwest 90th Street. Oh, yeah, sorry. My name's Amy Pellegrin. I'm gonna move this computer then. Great, thank you. 1593 Northwest 90th Street. I'm gonna very quickly try to give a little bit of a history here, because I have a lot of notes, and I feel like I should just rip them up right now, because tonight is entirely nothing, like we've had for the last month and a half of conversations with the city. So just a little bit of background, 125 people received a letter on May 28th or around there, talking about the amendment. It talked about how to participate with the CRS program, moving further. We are going to have to eliminate the basement exception, and we have this variance option. Very complex topic. I didn't really understand it. I consider myself a pretty smart person, but we had the opportunity to have this Zoom call with Amanda, and she was very thorough with explaining to us what that meant. What we learned during that Zoom call, I think there was five or six of us who attended. So out of 125, only five or six of us attended, not the city's fault. We appreciate that opportunity. We realized that the variance was essentially never going to happen. There's a 90% compliance requirement for the variance. So if my hit, if my house has a fire and I ask for the variance, all of a sudden, we're at 100% to grant line. So it's not gonna happen, right? So essentially, we understood our basements were, we weren't gonna have our basements anymore. So after that call, we felt as if, geez, if we didn't understand the letter, none of our neighbors did. So we went on a campaign, as you guys all know, because we sent you the signatures, and explained, wrote probably a five-page analysis to really say, this is all the information the city has given us. This is what we think. If you agree with us, let's make sure they understand how we feel, because we are the beneficiaries of those discounts, right? If we don't want the discount, we need to tell them. At the time, that was what was presented to us. This is about maintaining your discounts. This is an economic consideration. It's about the discounts. On June 28th, we learned that the proposed amendment was gonna change. Of course, we couldn't go around door-to-door in that amount of time before July 7th, before the zoning commission, but we were able to attend. And I guess I'll mention, we were at the zoning commission that day, the day of the zoning or the Zoom call, and, you know, the zoning commission tabled it. And then that gave us time to kind of talk to the community. The, the new amendment is what we're talking about today. I know this feels like it's not relevant, but it is, because we have, a lot of us that were involved from the start have had a lot of conversations, and this might shock you all, none of it was about flooding. None of it was about flooding. We didn't talk about any of that, any of that. These are our flood insurance policies, and we're getting a little bit of a discount, right? We asked during the Zoom call, does any of this have to do with safety? The answer was no. The answer was no. That's on a recorded call. We have it. This is about the CRS program, and it's about continuing the CRS program. And if there are political reasons to continue to do so, we are supportive of that, but not at the undue burden of our neighborhood. You saw that map. This two-foot requirement is only for those properties. If you want to go through the impact study and say, this is for the safety of our community and do it across the board, then have that conversation, figure out who it impacts, but don't just take one modest neighborhood in the neighborhood, in the community, and make us bear the burden of that risk, of that cost. That two-foot matters. That whole foot, that matters to us. It's not just about a flood. Nobody in this house, in this room has probably been flooded, because I'm pretty sure that the city represented last time, that's not ever happened. We're not that concerned about a flood. We are concerned about fire. We are concerned about tornadoes. We are concerned about, concerned about all those other things, and that would impact us as well. And this also affects a substantial improvement. So I think that those costs are real to us. We're concerned about the value of our homes. You know, we want to be an attractive neighborhood, and if we are different than the rest of Clive, then we feel like that's gonna hurt us, and that's real to us. And so if this is about the discounts, which is what we were told from the beginning, we don't want the discounts. That's what we're telling you all. I think that if this is about health and safety, that's a much bigger conversation. I think Councilwoman Weaver did a good job explaining that, and that's something that's gonna go well beyond us, and it's no longer gonna be on our backs in our neighborhood. So I mean, with that, I didn't look at my notes at all, and I probably missed some things that I wanted to talk about, but that, that would be, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
It sounds like at the time you had the meeting, there was still a staff understanding that there wouldn't be the ability to keep a basement. Has there been a revisiting of all this now that you know you can?
A revisiting with the staff or with the neighborhood or?
Of the group that had been?
So we, Amanda had had some emails, and so she did reach out to us as soon as she knew, or as soon as she was able to, to let us know that the amendment would be changed. It was the week before 4th of July, and the meeting was on the 7th. So we didn't go door-to-door. The underlying principle behind everybody's signatures was, these discounts are nothing to us. We want our basements, right? So I think that it's, it's pretty safe to say that if they felt that way, then the feasibility of complying with this, I hesitate to call it a basement by right when it's not necessarily a feasible right or a feasible goal. I think that at the zoning commission, somebody asked, how possible is it to comply with the two-foot requirement? And the response was, well, it's technically, technically, it's, you can do it by construction. I'm not sure if it's, it will be preferable. So I mean, I'm sure that's home by home, not everybody's in the same boat. You know, we have some homes that are already over the two feet. But for those of us who are impacted, to be able to be told, well, you have the opportunity, but maybe you won't want to, because we're moving all of our utilities to our first floor and, you know, losing a significant part of our finished space, because we can't have to add another stair to our front door or something to get to that extra foot. I will say that we tried to notify everybody this week that the amendment had changed and let them know that there was no longer a variance, but it was now two-foot, and utilities moved. It was a much less detailed analysis, because we didn't have time for that, but we encouraged them to attend tonight and listen and ask questions. And so I think that we do have some new people here tonight, and hopefully, they might have reached out to you as well. And I know a lot of you took the time to respond quickly and acknowledge our concerns, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you, Amy. Other questions or comments? And again, just those in the chamber, if you're in agreement with what she said, if you could raise your hand, those that disagree? Record will reflect that, again, most of those in the chamber raised their hand.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a different perspective? Please come forward.
Thank you, everybody. Jonathan Kramer, 915 Clark Street. I'm not gonna revisit any of the things, I agree with everything that Amy said, but I thought it would be helpful, maybe, because I've been in the area for 45 years, and I was one of the people that sandbagged it, you know, 1993 and all that stuff, and just have some background in some of the discussion that happened when, when the staff was presenting. It felt like maybe there wasn't 100% understanding of kind of the reality of, of what it looks like to be in the area when there's a flood, right? So, you know, how it actually happens, right? We know you get the flash flood notice, and there's, you know, everybody is aware that something's happening. You go out and you kind of look at Walnut Creek and kind of see, see what's happening. And I had a few nights at different times where, you know, I may have had a cocktail just kind of watching the water to see, see where it came up, right? Particularly at houses that weren't mine, which is kind of makes it a little bit more fun. But the reality is, it's, the concept that you're going to have a flood that would go above the two-foot level and immediately fill the basement is preposterous, right? I mean, if anybody has ever filled a kiddie pool, you know how long it takes when the hoses full up, right? You're talking about a basement. It may have a crack in it, but the idea that it fills up quickly is, is not accurate. So I wanted to make sure that the council understands, there's not a health and safety concern like a person's gonna die or whatever. Like there, you'd have to have in a complete Like there, you'd have to have in a complete collapse of a house. This is an extremely annoying long process where you're out with the HVAC or the, the wet vac, right? And you're kind of dealing with whatever you need to deal with if you don't have an otherwise waterproof basement, right? The reality is that the causation, the flood really just causes kind of water backup from our drains, which is not technically a flood, way more than anything else. So that was just one point I wanted to make is to the extent that anybody's talking about this as being a health and safety concern because of flood, it's, it would never be, right? The health and safety concern, if there is any, has to do with, well, how are we going to care with, for the property afterward? And so I wanted to let you all know, I do debtor creditor work as a, as a practice. So if you have a homeowner that has a mortgage and because of this increased cost, which definitely those numbers are low because all of the 2018 projections would be before COVID, before the, all of the problems we've had with supply chain, before the complete change in the labor market. So that all of those numbers are probably triple now, clearly over your 50% level at virtually anything, right? That when you can't afford that additional amount, because the insurance money does not come immediately, flood insurance money almost never comes, like within a nine months or a year, right? So you're talking about somebody that can't afford to actually make changes to the house, definitely not immediately. What you are talking about then is a disastered house. And then that becomes a blight for the houses around it. And so the people that are talking about that, if you have a kitchen fire and the cost to fix the kitchen fire is enough to meet over that standard. So now you've got to deal with the whole house and you're talking about increasing your basement, right? You're talking about ripping out the basement and reporing it? I mean, yeah, technically that's possible, but you, can you imagine, that's like saying, I want to keep my car, you know, with the red color in the paint, but I want you to replace the steel with aluminum, right? I mean, it's just an impossibility. It's, it's an astounding difficulty that I want to make sure that the council completely understands. This is the idea of reverse insurance, right? We're talking about taking a very little bit of savings for a lot of people and instead replacing that with potentially catastrophic losses for a single person or a few people at the time when they are the least apt to be able to handle that. And then that is going to affect the neighborhood, definitely long-term, to the extent that anybody cares about, you know, what are we going to do with these properties in the event that this become, you know, this area becomes like, you know, New Orleans or something, you know, or Venice? That's one thing, you know, I don't know how you deal with that. And, you know, if you have to have some plan to buy people out or not or whatever, I get that. But this is not the mechanism to do that, right? I feel like I'm part of the 125 families that definitely is affected. Now I know that that's a couple of percent of the whole of the city of Clive. I feel like I'm a citizen and I deserve to be protected. And I bought this house because I believed that it was going to be protected. And I think that this ordinance, as much as I totally respect the staff and all of the work that they put forward. I think this is the body that has to bring values to the facts that they bring. And I think the value judgment is that I want to feel like I'm a part of the city. I believe I'm entitled to be part of the city. I vote for, for things and I'm active when I need to be. Today, that's it. And I'm saying definitely the cost to the real people that would actually be affected would be catastrophic compared to the savings. And this is not a health and safety issue. And I just wanted to let you know. Thank you very much.
Before we step down, any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. Thanks, Jonathan. And you, you'd sent something late this afternoon. The only thing I want to back up on is I appreciate some of your extreme examples. Venice did very well with the canals and the flooding, right? But, and still doing well. But health and safety, I disagree with you wholeheartedly and I do not want to play it down. I'm looking at a fire chief over here in the corner that, and I was up the street watching rescues down on University from apartment complexes and houses of people that were in the basements and could have very easily and probably should have died. And that's for real. And so when you say it's not going to flood, it did. We broke windows out. We went into those places and pulled people out, right? We were getting lifeboats to get down there. So I don't want to downplay that part. I get what you're trying to say. I get that you're using the dramatic examples. That one I got to stop you at because that was real that night. And it's why we're doing some of the flood buyouts of some of those houses. And to watch that happen was very scary. Those are real people, as well as you all are. And so we've got to continue to think about the rest of your arguments. I get, I understand. I'm with you. That one I had to speak up on.
I appreciate that and, and that's very fair. My experiences are only in the Indian Hills neighborhood because that's what I know. That's where I did stuff. On the Windsor Heights East side, or maybe it's east, even eastern Clive or whatever, off, off of University. I did do, remember doing some, some bagging, some of the businesses there like in 93, but I did not have that experience that you had. And I, and yes, I, I totally appreciate that, that that might be a concern in, in some circumstances for sure. Definitely not in my neighborhood currently. I know that when I bought my particular house, it wasn't in the floodplain, right? The night, the 2019 changes added me to the floodplain because the federal government decided we need more people buying flood insurance because we need to make the policies across the board, right? And I had those discussions directly with the FEMA folks about why are these changes happening? And it was just kind of a money, you know, an insurance concept, which I totally get. So I, I thank you very much for your comments.
No, I just wanted for your next speaker, there's a gentleman online. Real quick, I wanted to make a comment here. I'm seeing kind of a repeating theme here, you know? I think Ted mentioned this earlier that, you know, we just don't, we don't have enough information, right? I know the staff has been working really hard on this. And I, I know Amy said that, you know, the conversations that she had had with staff and what we did, what we were discussing today weren't the same. So the takeaway that I'm, I'm hearing is we need to continue that discussion. We need to continue having those dialogues. Is, I mean, again, that's just a comment, not really a question, but.
Thank you.
All right. I, I think before we go to the audience, we'll take the remote caller.
Chris Spicer, I noticed that you'd had your hand up, that you, you've taken it down. If you'd still like to ask a question, if you'd please raise your hand again, I'd appreciate it.
Well, while you're doing that, next person come up with something that has not been said previously, please.
So my, I'm Michaela Keller and I live at 9529 Lincoln Avenue. I love my house. It's the great big house on Lincoln Avenue. It bumps right up next to Walnut, Walnut Creek. The reason why I bought that house was because of Walnut Creek, because of the walking path that I can walk my dogs in. I, I want to live in my house. But that being said, I really want to talk about the life safety risks. Because for the flood of 2018, I have a very interesting story. I took my daughter to the movies at, oh, the movie theater in Urbendale, right off of 22nd Street. I turn around, I come home and all of a sudden the rain starts to pour. The lights turn off. I'm here like reading my book at candlelight, waiting for her to call me. Finally, she calls me. I head to Urbendale. I get on Hickman. I turn right and wait a second. There's police officers there saying, saying that Hickman is flooded. Hickman is flooding. Nothing was wrong with Lincoln Avenue. Nothing was wrong when I turned right, but Hickman was flooded. So then I, I'm like, oh no. So I turn, right? Because I turn on the correct side of the road. Well, that was the side of the road that was flooded. So then of course, now all of a sudden my car is waterlogged and I'm here now stuck. Thank you, Fire Department, for giving me a lift down Hickman Avenue up to the, the quick trip above Douglas. I got dropped off and then I come home and my daughter gets home safely and I'm at my house, lights are turned off. Then all of a sudden I hear the pounding on my door at 1:00 AM. And here comes the police department saying, we need to evacuate you. Okay, getting my stuff. I go get evacuated. But the thing about this story is the safest place I was at was actually at my house. There was no water on Lincoln Avenue. There was no water in my basement and I have a multi-level house. There was no water anywhere. The safest place was in my home, the home that I bought, the home that I purchased. And here's the thing, with the duratio, the duratio comes in a couple of years ago, right? Did I lose, did I lose siding? No. Did I get any money for my roof? No. Did I get any money for my screened-in porch? No. Did I get any money for Clive's trees falling on my fence that I had to fix? No. And all of these things happen, but here's the thing, is if a tree falls on my roof and 50%, $200,000 worth of damage happens to my home, now I have to move things. Now I have to raise, I have to raise my foundation another foot. Now I have to do all of these things for what? $150 a year? Is that like, do I have to do all of this work for the house that I love for $150 a year? I'm a single woman. I am 38 years old. My home is my equity. My home is what I, like, I'm, I'm looking at my numbers. I'm looking at my 401K. The only reason I have a positive balance with student loans and all this stuff is because of my home's equity. And so now with all of these things, I'm seeing this drop. I'm seeing this go away. For what? $150? $150 a year? That's like three hours of work, maybe five hours of work on a bad day, right? For five hours of work, I'm looking at all my equity going down Walnut Creek? No, it's not worth it. It's not. My car got flooded in 2018. The duratio went through. Do I really want an ashboard tree to land on my roof? No. Yes, I removed three of those in my backyard. $8,000 that happened too. So I encourage you guys not to approve this amendment. And from a life safety risk concern, Hickman, Hickman is the issue. That's where the flooding has gone, is towards Hickman. That is the issue. Life safety risks, the speed on Lincoln Avenue, that's the life safety risk. When you go down 100th Street at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and 100th Street, that's the life safety risk, especially in the wintertime. But is it really my home? Is my home going to cause me any illness? No, I'm good. It's not. Thank you, guys.
All right. Did we get the caller?
I don't believe Mr. Spicer still has a question.
Okay, very good. Yes. While you're, you're coming up, I'll dispute one thing that you commented on. You mentioned checking your 401K. I do not recommend anyone check your 401K. Not a good idea. Yeah, it'll get better.
Hi, my name is Denise Attar Sacco. I'm a resident on 1592 Northwest 90th Street, Clive. Hi. I'm going to stay to where I work because I'm an immigrant and I've suffered enough microaggressions ever since I immigrated. Conscious, some very unconscious and very conscious bias because they say she's an immigrant. She doesn't know what the hell she's talking about. So I am a public health professional. I work at the Eye Department of Public Health. This has nothing to do with what I have here. But I want to show that I have the expertise on what I'm talking about and I treat everybody with respect and like a professional, like get treated the same, back the same. So I did write about this in the, to the, to the city, but my colleague, my friends and neighbors don't know about this and it's, it's good that they learn about it as well. So, you know, addressing inequities, health inequities is becoming so important as we go along. Because inequities are connected with social determinants of health and also health disparities. And we're working at the state so hard to address health inequities, addressing the social determinants of health to reduce the health disparities that our populations are suffering from. And I do apply for federal funding through my job. And one of the important things that's coming out of all these grants that we apply for is how we're going to address health inequities to reduce health disparities. Okay. And I know health and safety has come out as important for the city, but it has not been looked at in all aspects. And I think it's important to draw attention to this. So when we apply competitively, we're asked to address this at the federal level. When we issue requests for proposals for, from the state to the local and county levels, we request the same. And, you know, to be eligible for funding, they have to show us, they're actually, same as we do at the federal level. They have to show us at the local level that they're doing the same to reduce health inequities across board and had addressed social disparities. So, because I know this has come up even at the last meeting. And I know that the city has Clive and Amanda has been very helpful in providing me with all the information when I asked her. And I thank you for that. We've applied, city has applied for federal funding from a number of federal and state agencies. These includes FEMA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, et cetera. And I've looked into their FEMA, to their application processes and FEMA specifically on their website. In their emergency management performance grant opportunities, they list equity as being one of its three national priorities to support the diversity of communities that it serves. Okay. And I've given the link where you can access that. And likewise, the Natural Resources Conservation Services is also committed to working towards equity by removing systemic barriers. And I've given the link to that as well. Now, what am I going with this? Adoption of the proposed amendment to the Chapter 11 flood control by the city of Clive will severely impact property values of Clive residents, particularly with those with properties within the Indian Hills neighborhood. In families, now, health has come as something important and I'm going to give you another aspect of health, which is important. Impacted families relying on financial gain from the sale of properties. So let's say you lose your job and you need to make ends meet, you need to rely on the sale of your property. Let's say you have illness, you develop cancer. It's happened to my family back in Malta. I know this can happen to us as well. You need to rely on the sale of your property to get the resources you need to pay your medical costs. Let's say you have kids and you want to pay for their education, you may need to sell your property to do that. All this will be impacted. And it, and it will lead to health inequities. And as we see, health inequities lead to health disparities. So this must also be taken into consideration. We have been told that the city of Clive has a good relationship with a number of federal funding sources as well as state funding sources. And which I have explained, they have put a high value on equity and ensuring that it's being protected and reducing health disparities. I'm sure federal funders and state funds will not be pleased to learn that certain population groups within Clive are being negatively impacted, leading to health inequities and associated disparities. And I know that the city is already engaged in other community health projects, such as the Clive Community and Wellness Project Initiative. And I'm engaged in that through the state as well. So I know about it. And I know its goals of that initiative is to create a socially connected, safe and engaged community. So I find it, but hard to see this, that for me, it's inconceivable that the same, that we're doing another aspect of what the city is doing for the goodness of our community is not being done the same with respect to other policies, even though these are development planning urban policies, what do you call it, emergency policies, et cetera. They should be working to a same goal, that it have a healthy and thriving and equitable community. We've mentioned a lot, the health and safety of flooding. But there are other aspects of health impacts when it comes to health inequities and those must be taken seriously into consideration. We're developed, we've developed with a new human and health and service agency. We've merged, divided, part of public health with the Department of Health, of Human Services. And I can tell you firsthand that one of the most important goals for the new agency is to work towards health equity across all communities. So we'll be going to looking at this much more deeply. And you really have to take this seriously, not just the flash flooding, health impact that you may see, but health impacts down the line and how it's going to impact our communities, especially if there are minority populations, minor population groups like the Indian Hills neighborhood with all its diversity, that is going to be impacted seriously with this amendment. And this needs to be considered, taken into consideration as well. Same as you've concerned other aspects, this has not given, given issue attention. It is long-term planning as well with this because it's impacted the health of populations down the line and it needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Is anyone else in the chamber wish to address the council on this issue this evening? With any points that have not yet been raised? Seeing no, oh. I wasn't begging.
Sorry. I like talking. I'm Katie Hall. I live at 1549 Northwest 91st Street, Gem of a House, after we fixed it. So I'm a professional sand volleyball player at heart. I create solutions for real life though and advocate in, in that vein of things. So I generally represent agriculture and we talk about solutions every day. And I want to underline and highlight that I don't think that this is the right solution. And I want to underline and highlight that I don't think that this is the right solution. So when I purchased my home in 2013, I was a young, single lady. Had a man friend in Maine, but I told him it was my home. And if we split up, I got it. And we kind of laughed about it at the time. Anyway, we're still together, things are great. He's maybe watching. And we, we, and we have two boys and they're wonderful. Um, and I'm playing volleyball. Anyway, so life, life is good. My point is that when I went to sign the papers, my real estate agent told me at the time that I was in the floodplain. And I said, no deal. And I started to walk out. And he said, just kidding, you've been exempted. And so there were some paperwork at the time that I had been exempted. And I signed the papers because it was, I was no longer in the floodplain. I talked with Susan just ahead of this meeting. And I said, I think I'm the first one out. And I referenced the maps and I'm concerned that we're in. So I need to have a conversation with Amanda. But I, I am concerned about what this does to our property values. So nearby homes are limited, right, in general? So I'm curious what that maybe looks like when the market changes and we start to hit a recession and we see more homes on the market and more choices for buyers, perhaps less buyers, but more choices. And then that would impact our ability to sell and maintain that equity and value that we've put into our home. So anyway, I appreciate all the conversations that I've been able to have with multiple folks on city council and with Mayor Edwards. I really appreciate that. I need to continue doing my homework and I appreciate cheat sheets from everyone else involved. But anyway, I'm, I'm just thankful to be here and I appreciate you guys hearing me today. Thank you.
Again, I, oh.
One more. I'm Jim Carroll. I live at 1549 Northwest 92nd, across from her. Not across, but street over. My concern is the insurance rates going up, just the homeowner insurance for fire. The garbage truck that ran through the house on Lincoln that took that house out. Boom. D'Arancio. How about the car that ran down my street 92nd? Luckily went across the street and hit a big tree before it went through a house. So the tree saved that house. That would be more than 50% value. So what is the cost of the insurance increase because of this ordinance? That's really, I haven't got the answer from my insurance agent yet, but it's going to be well more than $150 a year. I know it is. So has anybody looked at that, what the regular homeowner's insurance rate is going to go up to meet this new ordinance?
So if you come forward if you can speak.
The only thing that would impact.
You can come to the mic, please.
The only thing that would impact at all as far as traditional homeowners' insurance is this endorsement that's called the building ordinance. It basically covers coating and zoning. That's the only thing that would be impacted by this. Your normal homeowner insurance, everything else would not be impacted by this.
This ordinance isn't going to increase my homeowner's insurance.
I didn't say that. I said it impacts the endorsement. If you, the endorsement covers coating. So in this particular ordinance, it's an ordinance, right? So if you, if you have damage, whether it's flood or anything else to your home with this ordinance, now you have to bring it up to the two feet. You have to move all utilities. That's going to incur a cost. Well, the insurance company, if they did not have this ordinance, would not pay for any of that stuff. This endorsement pays for those.
We gotta make sure we have the endorsement.
You gotta have the endorsement and the right amount. Typically, it comes at 10% of coverage A. So you got a $200,000 house, it's going to cover 20,000, which may not be anywhere near enough. So the cost of that endorsement would very likely go up. Your traditional rest of your homeowners, not impacted.
We get all that, Katie?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Again.
Kevin Kapler, 9265 Lincoln Avenue. I live right next to Walnut Creek. The question I have is regarding the CRS. Are we, is the CRS only providing discounts to residential properties? Or is there a commercial consideration in this as well?
Amanda, do you want to address that?
Sure. There are also discounts to the commercial properties. The premium savings in the 2021 renewal cycle for commercial properties was around $52,600 a year. The residential savings was around $21,600 a year. That's cumulative across the policies.
Thank you, Amanda.
So is it safe to say is that there's more than just the residential piece to consider here? That there may be some other, maybe more powerful commercial interest in mind when we're approving this? Because if we're talking $150 a year, I, I know for a fact that, for anybody I've spoken to on this, and I have several neighbors who have a paid off house, they're actually not going to see any discount. They basically just get the condition that if something bad happens to your property, you're going to incur a lot of cost i- if you want to rebuild. And so just from, from my, my standpoint, I mean, I, I went through, actually worked the, the day of 2018 flood was the first day I was in my property. And I was asked, asked by the, by the police to leave the first day I was in my property because of, of the flood. And in as far as I, as I know, is that's, that flood was probably considered a 100-year flood. And we had maybe an inch of water in our basement. There was nothing close to, you know, a catastrophic. It was more of an inconvenience. So I just ask that you take these things into consideration when you consider this proposal.
Thank you.
I was, I wanted to clarify, she said the year that you had that event was 2018 when you had the water in your basement? Per the statistic or the actual record, that was not anywhere close to the 100-year event.
That's not, was not considered 100-year.
No.
We've never had the 100-year flood event along Walnut Creek.
That we've recorded, yeah.
That's been recorded.
Hello, my name is Joe Fitzgibbon. I live at 1581 Northwest 90th Street in Clive. And I thank you for the gentleman to make his point that there are larger issues than just residential to be considered. However, it has been, by understanding, through repeated times in these proceedings, that the commercial buildings are not subject to the flood ordinance legislation. This legislation that we're discussing here does not affect commercial properties. Now, they piggyback on the discounts and they benefit, but they're not subject to these rebuilding guidelines. So although his point was, was well made, it's not going to affect, you know, businesses on a, on a negative aspect because they're not subject to this legislation. So I just want to be sure that everyone here understood that.
Thank you. Again, seeing no one further, Amanda or Doug, do you want to sum up?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to make a few clarifying comments. I know this was a very technical conversation that we've had with a lot of the residents and not in the realm that these, most of them are used to dealing with in their day-to-day lives. So I just wanted to clear up a couple of things I think may have been misunderstandings. So first, from the Zoom session that we did have, the question that I recall being asked was whether or not NFIP policies would still be available if we did not participate in the CRS program? The answer to that, of course, is yes. And then the follow-up question to that was if the primary benefit received from the CRS program was economic? The answer to that again is yes. The question I do not recall being posed is, is the only reason to adopt this change economic? Which we've shown tonight. There are definitely life safety and property protection concerns associated with us tonight. Also, the question that was brought up at the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting about whether or not it would be feasible to do a basement was whether or not it would be feasible to modify an existing basement to add an additional foot? My response to that was pretty much anything is possible. However, with these 40-ish year-old basements, you may not want to try to add to them in the event of a substantial damage. You may be better served to fully replace that. So we do know basements, I don't remember which councilperson pointed it out, but we are in the Midwest and basements do leak. Additionally, the 2019 firm update had nearly a net zero change on the number of properties in this neighborhood in the floodplain. Some were taken out, some were added in. It was not just an expansion to get more policies in the floodplain. We did see quite a few homes removed. And then for homes that have a Loma, that was the reference, I believe, earlier for a home that had been exempted from the floodplain. That'd be a letter of map amendment that has stated that the structure is above the base flood elevation and then therefore is not considered to be in the floodplain. So that was that reference, just for clarity.
Thank you, Amanda. Again, we're at the point now where I think we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close our public hearing. Is there further discussion? Being done, would the council please vote to close the public hearing?
For clarification, that's just, right, we're not voting on anything.
We're cutting off discussion.
That's right.
Hopefully.
Not yet, but yes, officially you are, but right.
And with the post to vote, and so we have closed the public hearing. Uh, the next item would be, if the council wishes to do so, is to bring the ordinance off the table to discuss further. And that would require at least three votes to do so. And so is there a motion and desire to bring the ordinance off the table? And maybe legal counsel would, could identify for us the consequences of doing so or not doing so.
Sure, the council had tabled the motion to consider the ordinance and had moved that to tonight. If you want to vote or have that debate and on the ordinance, you need to move it off the table. If you choose not to, the pending motion on the table will then die. Now it can be reconsidered or added to an agenda in the future at any time. But as far as the process this evening, the motion, if the motion does, if there is no motion to bring it off the table, the motion will die. And we'll have to, I guess, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Your Honor.
But it continues to stay on the, on the table indefinitely?
No, that's, that's the point, is that it will be done. It will be.
It could be brought back.
It can be a new consideration of a new item at a new time, just like considering purple bicycles next week.
And there, counsel, there would likely be then a re-publication of public hearing. We would basically start the process over in that situation.
And if we, if we take it off the table, though, we're not, regardless of how we vote, that's not the end of it, right?
If you take it off the table, you're not voting for it or against it.
Right.
It's then to vote for or against.
Right, there will be two actions. Either move to bring it off the table and then there will be a vote. And assuming that vote is yes, three in favor, yes. Then there's a second vote to approve the ordinance. Again, first reading. Then we'll come back in two weeks and do the second reading. If you decide to table that again for a few weeks or go move on to the third, multiple step process here. But again, if you do not move to bring it off the table, it dies, but can be on the agenda another time. And as our city manager identified, this is an item that had public hearing notice. And whether we would re-notice that for public hearing, I'd have to go back and research whether this qualified for that already. So I don't know that that's a set yes or no. But either way, it would be published in the agenda in advance of a meeting pursuant to the law.
And it looks like Ted wants to say something. Unless he's frozen. Oh, he was frozen.
How do you feel about my Wizard of Oz head looking over you there?
No, I don't care to see you on TV ever.
I don't, I don't either. Counselor, if, if we bring it off the table and then vote it down, does it go away for good at that point?
The answer for good is certainly a charged question, Councilmember Weaver. It, the motion would fail, meaning tonight's agenda, we would move on to item two. Could it be back on the agenda in two weeks? Yes. So it doesn't go away forever. Anyone could consider any sort of item, you know, by putting it on the agenda, just like normal processes. But you would, it would fail in the first reading. It would fail, right, it would die today as well. Does that answer your question?
It does, but so are we effectively doing the same thing by either doing that or not bringing it off the table? Does it's effectively the same outcome?
Yes, with the exception that if you do not bring it off the table, you don't have to render a vote.
Right.
So, you know, another way of doing this, right, would be to make a motion to take it off the table and to then not have a second would kill the motion formally, correct?
It would die for lack of a second.
And so purposely bringing it off the table with a motion with nobody seconding, it would die.
Correct.
Okay.
It could not be brought off the table without a motion to do so.
So I want to make a comment first. I know we ended the discussion, but as I always do. I don't want this in the minutes, but I agree with Ted Weaver. If we can, if we can strike, if we can strike that part from the recording. You know, I remember the CRS program being put into place on behalf of the residents and the same ones in this room, right? Good intentions. And I think the city did a really good job and the staff did a really good job of what this council asked for. And that was to go chase these CRS points and to figure out a way to get the highest discount for 125 houses. Now, sorry, you might not like this part, but that's why I said, how many houses in the, in the city? It's 4,500 that this council has to think about, not 125. So you have to do what's best for the whole sometimes, right? In spite of the few that are in the room. And if I did a house count in this room, there's probably 10 houses in this room by count of how many of you came together, right? 12? Okay, 12? Nah, I'm going to call you on that one. But, so 10 to 20 out of 4,500. Saying that, it was for you. And you're saying you don't want it. I don't have a problem getting rid of it and having staff focus on other things. And that's where I sit, because it directly affects you. It will be unfortunate if we lose three to five million in grants for the rest of the city over by getting rid of this. That will be unfortunate, right? But it's, I think something Doug said, it's not an absolute that we would lose the three to five million by getting rid of this. The other part of this, I'd like to just be on the record of saying, and some of this is, I'm for you, right? But I have to make these comments. You know, in the last flood, we had a large donation by an individual or some organization and we had to decide who we gave that money out to. And it went to flood victim houses. I had a very big problem still to this day that we gave some of that money out to people that were not insured under the flood program. You chose not to be insured, yet we came and helped you. I thought that that money should go to the ones that were already insured and did the right thing, right? And when we help you with your deductibles, that type of thing. And hopefully, Jonathan, we never get to the point that your basement's flooded and we have to rescue you. But I can tell you that the Fire Department, the Police Department will still show up regardless if you're in the CRS program or not. But those are all real things happening in the city. Saying that, I would make a motion to take this off the table officially. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I do, I do just want to add. My concern here is if, if we, if we didn't move this off the table or we, we vote this down today, I don't think we're going to have further discussion. As, as Mike alluded to, the staff has plenty to do. And I think, you know, that may be the end of this discussion. And I'm not, I know everybody has strong feelings about this, but I think a, a longer discussion is warranted, perhaps.
Thank you. Ted, did you want to comment further?
Yes, I do. Hold on one second, let me get my video.
We can do that video if you like.
Yeah. Let, let me take a step back here. You know, when we, when this was presented to us in April, the way it was presented, and I just watched it again today, so I'm confident on, on these details, is that, you know, this was impacting 45 homes out of a possible 185, which is probably both residential probably both residential and commercial. And so we were looking at a subset, a fairly, you know, 25% subset of the overall neighborhood. And so I can't speak for my colleagues. I know for, for my line of thinking at that time, it was, well, we're trying to maintain this discount for everyone. And so for the greater good, on the very off chance that one of these homes has a full rebuild, you know, we can maintain this discount for everyone. But fast forward to today, and that's not what we're talking about anymore. Now we're talking about the entire neighborhood and everyone that is within that flood plain. And again, when we talk about the, the scope of the savings, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense economically. And again, what we're doing today is based off of economics. If we want to have a conversation and a dialogue about for safety to change the ordinance for the entire city, I'm open to that conversation. I don't know whether I'd support it or be against it, but I'm open to it. But we need a whole lot more information before we do that. But instead, we're targeting this one neighborhood. And again, when it was presented to us in April, it was a much smaller subset. And so that's very different than what we're talking about today. And so I am very much against this particular modification. I'm open to the overall conversation and sure kind of I'll disagree with you just a little. I don't think this dies. I think we can have the policy conversation for the city and let's, let's get more data, let's get more information, and then we can make a more informed decision. But I don't think we're there right now. But I don't think it's fair to these residents to target their neighborhood, especially when it was presented as just 45 homes out of 185. So, you know, I'm going to be voting against this.
I don't know if you can hear that, but there was applause for that.
They're booing.
Oh. Eric, you want to weigh in?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I tried to come into this conversation as we've all been very involved in these type of flood mitigation matters and staff has done a tremendous job. You know, as I've listened to all the comments provided, and I think staff has done a great job, but I also think the neighborhood has done a great job and really looked into this and educated themselves. And I will say this, that, you know, in my mind, the burden is provided is inequitable on the Lincoln neighborhood right in here. To me, I think this is a longer conversation. I think we need to continue to study this. But as I've seen right now, I don't support it. And I think it does provide an undue burden upon this neighborhood that in my mind is simply not fair.
Thank you, Eric. You were applauded as well.
That was a first for everything.
I booed you.
It's quite, it's been quite the evening, but I think we're ready to vote. So would the council please vote?
Again, a reminder of the pending question is to move it off the table. A vote of three will move it off the table. A vote of anything less than that, it will die. Dun, dun, dun.
And would clerk please post the vote? The vote to take it off the table, drum roll. Eric Klein, do you want to give a verbal vote? Yea or nay? Or electronic? Did he leave after the applause?
Scouts, thank you.
Mic drop.
Councilman Klein, are you able to hear us?
Yeah, give, sorry, guys. It's, it's getting a little dicey here. My vote's not coming off. I'm against taking it off the table.
Okay, so that was a no. So we can enter that. So would the count, would clerk please post the vote? And it fails by a vote of two to three to take it off the table. So with that, we will take a five-minute reset. Thank you all. Do you want to clarify?
Hey, I'm losing my room here, so I just wanted to stick around as long as I can. But I'm going to have to, to get off the phone or get off the meeting here. So. Right, I hung on here. They're loving me to get out of here. So. Yeah, if you would, I appreciate that. And I'm going to reach around back with Richard on that Green Belt landing update. Perfect. I should be back. Shout out to all of you. Perfect. Thanks for that. All right, guys. Bye. You guys are kicking me out of here, right? Gosh, you're kicking me out, right?
Yeah.
That was, that was the correct answer, my friend.
To action item number two, public hearing on Clive Soil Quality Restoration, did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, it was published in the Des Moines Register on June 29, 2022.
Very good. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honors. Tonight, I'm happy to bring forward staff recommendation to award this contract for the cost share program to Quality Cut Lawn Care. When we had our public bid opening, they were the low bid. Since then, I've engaged with the principal at Quality, Quality Cut, Steve Darcy, who is here with us to answer any questions that you might have, checked on references and also confirmed that they'd done similar work. And based on what we've seen, they met all the requirements of the specs. And we are comfortable moving forward with an award of contract to them. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Pete? Please, Michael?
Can you qualify that work that has been done in the past, some of the projects specifically for us in this area? It's a kind of a niche market, right?
Yes. So a couple of things on that front. When we put this out on the street, I wanted to make sure that we were getting it out to firms that want to do this kind of work. So fortunately, our friends at ISWAP put, keep a good list of those folks, and we emailed all of them. Quality Cut is one of the businesses that's there. They also included an example in their materials that they submitted of a residential property. One thing I wanted to test was to make sure that they could take things to scale. And so one of the references I checked with was at Des Moines, West Des Moines Water Works. Quality Cut has done multiple years' worth of work for them. Some of it is on turf restoration, some of it's on other types of planting and landscaping as well. Based on the scale that they represented to me, I think that I'm confident that they can handle a logistics, a logistically complex project like this. But Steve, if you want to come up and speak directly to your expertise around the soil quality restoration, the actual application, he could speak better to it than I can.
Hi, Steve Darcy. Do you have a, sorry, certain question?
Yeah, on this scale, can you give us some examples of some projects you've worked on and on this type of scale? You're really scaling up fast. And along with, what I kept hearing from Polk City is the communication is huge. And the city, Polk County was inundated with phone calls from residents in their project. I know at that point, Polk City pushed a lot of that off. Well, it was part of the RFP and part of the project that the vendor would take those phone calls. And it's a kind of a sense of how you're gearing up for that customer service piece, phone calls, and then as well as scaling up for the yards.
So there would be an email. And once we dive into the, the progression of how we're going to implement and which lawns we're going to do first, and then moving forward, that we could tell how many we're going to get done in a day. You know, my goal is to try and get this done in like three weeks and do it very quickly.
The 100 of them?
Last year, we had just a small, it's a hydraulic aerator and then another aerator, but we'll buy a stand-on aerator. It's got the seed box on top of it. I've looked at those priced about, just waiting for this meeting to move forward. And it sets the exact seed rate of what you want. So it's all calibrated to, it's very simple machine, but it's a great machine. And we'll really move things along quickly. The hardest part is going to be getting the, is the trucking and then loading the compost into the top dressers. So that's going to take the longest, but we've, I've worked on some things with that is finding a place that we could in Clive on Swanson that we could potentially, still working. He's got to ask his boss, but store it at their facility, the lock gate, where we could keep a loader. And then our shops on railroad in West Des Moines, that would cut travel time in half roughly. So again, that's most of the time-consuming part is the travel and the loading. So.
And not to get into too many details of your business and operations, but this, it sounds like it's, it's hooked onto this aerator, which is impressive to blow it in or to kind of move it through that. But is it available right now with everything going on?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. I mean, it's not coming from Italy or something.
I saw, I saw a whole bunch of Minuteliner this past week. I was picking up a part, so.
Any other questions?
I was wondering, you mentioned email communication at the beginning. Is that, is that something that will lay out for that specific homeowner? This is what you can expect? Or is it more of a, a general communication, hey, you signed up for this program?
Right. So council, to councilman Coys' point, a big part of the customer relationship experience here does fall to our contractor. But they don't stand there alone. When we want, because we've already been building those relationships as a city, we're also with our partners at the county. So in those initial communications or the next round of communications, I'd say, because we've got a lot, residents will be receiving a number saying, based on the total square footage that you have, here is the total cost of doing the project, the city's portion of it, up to $1,000, and then you're on the hook for the rest. So they get an invoice. They get also an agreement document, which council has reviewed already, that gives us permission to be there and protects everybody involved. And then they'll also have a cover letter in that communication that starts to lay out things that they've already heard, but we want to say again, like, here are the key steps to get yourself scheduled over the coming weeks. You'll be talking with folks at Quality Cut, here's their contact information. When your time comes up, these are the key steps you need to do. Once you have your application done, your, the installation done, here are the next things you need to do to get a great result as well. And then after that, we'll invite them to a webinar that we're going to do as well. And the city's going to be organizing that, but all of our partners are going to be part of it. But this is an expectation that we made clear to everybody who was bidding on this, that they would be right alongside us in all of these pre-communications. Now, the actual logistics of scheduling, when they're going to be there, that falls to our contractor to do that.
Is it, is it the residents' responsibility to call at the time that they're given?
No.
Schedule? Okay.
No, the scheduling would be much more in back and forth communications. There's, the whole success of the program depends on how well we continue to keep it easy for folks. And that's why we wanted them to say, all right, here's the check. I know I'm going to do a little scheduling with the contractor on all this. I don't get to picking necessarily the exact day because they've got to be able to do this efficiently. We're not going to zip from the far west side to the east side. But they know they're signing up for that. We'll reiterate that in these next, in the next round of communications as well.
And so, and it sounds like they would write the check at the time they receive that communication and invoice.
That's how you finally secure your spot in the program is when we receive your, receive your check.
So, and I just want to be cognizant that, you know, if I'm writing a check to something and I'm, I'm being told this is the timeline for delivery, that's what I'm expecting, right?
And we're going to give ourselves flexibility within that timeline because we're also completely at the mercy of weather on all of this.
And that was kind of my point. It's there's going to be those, you know, uncontrollable variables.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we think that the folks who have already signaled interest in this will understand. They have proven to be a pretty darn savvy group of folks and to understand why this is important. Early adopters in many ways, right, for a practice that may be very unfamiliar to the general populace of Clive.
I have two questions, and I'll go ahead and say them both. One is, I'm interested in what the huge volume of questions in Polk City were about, that we might have to worry about. And then is, are we giving people the opportunity if, let's say, it's a larger property and so it's going to be $10,000, you know, with the 1,000, can they negotiate and just say it's a part of the property? Or does it kind of need to be all or nothing?
Well, the win for the city and what we've represented, and I would like to encourage to stay true to this, is it's all your turf. We're not We're not going to be able to handle, we've gone out and measured and spot-checked for areas where we can do this. We want to get as much soil quality improved in the community as we can. And if the city's coming forward, having done this work, we're going to do it on all of your yard. It would need to be, I think, a really unique situation, maybe where there was some particularly disturbed area or some of the, I guess there could be something like that. But our working assumption is, we're doing your whole yard. I do think from a just good pragmatic customer-oriented perspective, we do, we're willing to have those conversations. But I would like to try and stay as consistent as we can in the communications with residents and as sort of consistent across the board, that this is normative. This is, everybody that's in the program is getting their entire yard done. And then take it from there if we do have some of those unique situations that come up.
I just didn't know what to anticipate for people and what those prices are going to look like.
So we have a pretty good sense. We think that most residents are going to push up relatively close to that $1,000 number. They'll be closer to the $1,000 number than they would be to the $500 number. So because the total cost will be somewhere in the four figures for most folks. But it's going to have a range, because there are a lot of yards that have more grass and turf and others that don't. But it's going to be a generous, a generous contribution from the city for all of these participants. And the participants have likewise been generous to give us this opportunity to make the improvements throughout the city. Your question about the Polk City experience, the range of questions is really, really good, actually. We have people who are interested and also people who want to get a great product at the end. So some people ask, if I have weeds in my yard, am I still going to have weeds after I do soil quality restoration? Yep, probably, because what we're putting out there is encouraging all kinds of green things to grow. They would ask, would you be willing to be flexible with the type of seed that you're going to apply? We actually know we're going to have, just for scale purposes, we're going to have one type of seed that we think is appropriate. And that was one of the things we asked that the bidders and Steve did, his team, have a preferred type that they would like us to all go with. It can accommodate a lot of different types of yards and conditions in yards.
And that is?
It's a turf-type tall fescue. And then it's got, that's 90% turf-type tall fescue, 10% bluegrass for the knitting. That's in, fills it nicely. It's an ATUP certified for drought as well, so.
Other questions?
Just one quick follow. So you mentioned, you know, when, when we were first talking about this, you had some projections. You had some, you know, really good kind of, yeah, projections, right? Now that you've done a lot of this legwork and you've been out there, you've been measuring, you've got all that. Are those projections still generally in line? Like, I know that's a little bit of a loaded question, but are there any like major surprises that you ran into or any outliers that are concerning?
Nothing that we saw on the, on the properties that we went out to visit. A couple of good surprises, right? Program oversubscribed. We didn't get just to 100 folks who said they were interested. We got to 130 plus two homeowners association. So great, good job, Clive, right? Way to be, be open to this idea and come alongside us to get it done. The number of folks that want to participate is so strong, and while we have them interested, I want to go back to IDALLs and see if they would like to increase their awards to the city of Clive that might create some additional capacity for us to do it. If not this fall, maybe next spring or the fall after that, just so we keep the momentum going and keep building on this success. One of the other really good pieces of information we got was just how competitive this bid is. This is 21 cents per square foot. If I recall right, Polk City was at 22 last year. And we're in a very different economic environment at this point than we were 12 months ago. I was concerned that we would end up with a price per square foot that was going to make it impossible with the funds that we have to get to that target of 100 homes. But with these kinds of numbers and with the actual measurements we've done, I think we've got a really good shot at hitting that goal of 100 houses. Nice round number.
Other, other questions or comments? Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to comment on this? Otherwise, we'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. From the council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing for discussion. If not, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? I believe Councilmember Klein is no longer with us. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. The next thing we have is the resolution approving plans and specs.
Motion to approve plans and specs.
Motion and a second, approve plans and specs. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And then would the clerk please post that vote on the plans and specs? That passes by a vote of four to zero. Motion to approve the receipt of bids.
Second.
Motion and a second to receive the bids. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Receipt of bids passes by a vote of four to zero. Motion to, to award contract quality cut lawn care $209,193.18. Resolution and a second, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that? And the resolution awarding the contract quality cut lawn care passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I might add one more point. In the interest of making it easy for everybody, we'll also be taking online payments if folks want to use a credit card, so they don't have to worry about a paper check.
Thank you. Would like to say.
All right, the next item is a public hearing on our home occupations zoning ordinance. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, we did, Your Honor. We published that in the Des Moines Register on July 1, 2022.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to start by defining home occupations, which would be a, a home occupation, or as the state refers to them, home-based businesses. Those are business activities that take place within the dwelling or the home, but are secondary to the use of that, that facility as a home. So this is working from home, not converting homes to businesses, just for clarity there. So what we have before us tonight is House File 2431 went into effect, went into effect on July 1, and it limits some of the ways cities are able to regulate home-based businesses or home occupations. The way this regulation is written is it limits how restrictive we can be, but we can be less restrictive than the state in these situations. So in our ordinance today, we have three levels of home occupation. You have level one, that is considered no impact, level two, minor impact, and level three, major impact. So the changes here to stay in compliance with the new state code would be revisions to the level one and level two. There are no changes proposed to level three. Level three do require a special use permit approved by the Board of Adjustment. There are also no changes to the general standards that's included within the home occupation section. So what we're looking at is for level one home occupations today would only allow activities within the home and not allow any onsite employees or onsite clients. So that's going to be, you know, your Etsy shops, things of that nature where you work in the home. No one's coming to you. Those, those types of home-based businesses are not required to register with the city today. And that will continue to be true under this proposed amendment. But what does happen for level one, and this is required of the state, we cannot be more restrictive than this, is to expand the area that can be used for that home occupation. Not only now includes the home, but it would include any accessory building, structures, or yards. However, the state language does state that those outdoor activities may not be visible from the adjacent properties, streets, or other public areas. So we have incorporated that language into our requirements for level one, that they would not be visible from outside of the dwelling. We also added restrictions on hours and employee parking. Those requirements did not exist before, because there were no business hours and there were no employees to have those regulations. So one of the other changes we will come back to at the end of the conversation here does relate to non-registered childcare homes. Currently, daycare homes are allowed as a level two home occupation. But with the changes here, it made sense to move those non-registered daycare or childcare homes to level one, we thought. Put a pin in that, we'll come back to that at the end. For the level two, minor impact home occupations, we clarified there that activities can occur in the yard. That is already how we have been utilizing that level two. We have home occupations that have portions that take place outside. So our intent here was to clarify that language, so it was clearly in compliance with the state code, but then continued how we've currently been operating. It also modified the employee and client occupancies to match the dwelling occupant load calculation that is found elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. Previously, there was a more restrictive, only four clients per hour. That is no longer allowed to be applied for inside the home per the state regulation. And we did leave the number of customer interactions outside of the home to still be four per hour. So we get to come back now to daycares or childcare homes. So Councilwoman Judkins made an excellent observation that when we wrote this, apparently kids like to play outside. So technically, those activities of childcare home would be visible from outside of the home. So we were not intending to require that every childcare provider in a home-based childcare would have to install a privacy fence. But the way this language is written, under level one, strictly interpreted, kids would not be allowed to go outside. And under level two, they would have to install a privacy fence. That was not the intent. We do currently allow those in-home childcare facilities as a level two. And we have a mix across the community that have fences and do not have fences, have chain-link fences. So I did reach out to the Childcare Regulatory Program Manager at DHS this morning just to get clarity on their requirements. And the state also does not require fencing. We confirmed that. They do under certain situations. Like, for instance, if they're home backed up to Hickman Road and they're by a busy arterial, they would then have to install a fence. But for a general rule, if you're just in a typical residential setting, you would not be mandated to install a privacy fence or any fence for an in-home childcare under the state's regulations. So in the staff report, we had indicated that staff's recommendation was to waive the second and third consideration, since this is already in effect at the state level. However, we don't receive a ton of home occupation registrations. So if council's desire is to not require in-home childcare to install privacy fences, staff would recommend that we do not waive second and third consideration. And we can insert some language into the code, basically stating that your typical outdoor activities in a residential setting are not intended to be interpreted, included into that screened or completely not visible language. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance to be in compliance with the state code change. However, we would recommend doing the second consideration at the next council meeting, so we have time to adjust that language. So thank you very much, Susan. That was definitely not intentional.
Good catch. Further questions from anyone here or online?
At this point, there are only staff online.
Well, seeing none, again, the next item then would be for us to close the public hearing.
We have to close the public hearing.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? So the vote to close the public hearing passes by a vote of four to zero. And again, here, we're looking at just the first reading.
And Your Honor, if we're able to get that language where the council wants it at the next meeting, then we would like, we'd go second and third of July 28.
So we need someone to move the ordinance.
I'd move that ordinance number 1124, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
And we have a second on that. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote on the first reading? First reading passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing on a water tower lease amendment. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, that one was published in the Des Moines Register on June 29.
Thank you. Jeff?
Mayor, Council, good evening. T-Mobile Central currently has cellular infrastructure on our northwest 104th water tower and have requested permission to add a emergency generator to that site. It's allowed within the original agreement, so we need to adjust the agreement to include an increase in cost, because we're not going to let them put it there with nothing. That has constituted the need for a public hearing to consider this. With that, staff has reviewed it. It has gone through community development for their site plan stuff, and discussions have been made. So upon council's approval of this, we'll move forward with getting them approved to add the generator.
Questions for Jeff?
The additional rent is $400 a month for this addition.
We've been them hard. They proposed 100, so we got them a little.
Good job, good job. Seeing no further discussion, what we're looking for here is to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And the motion to close the level hearing passes by a vote of four to zero. And we need to next move the resolution.
Move to?
Just move the resolution.
Move to resolution.
That's all you? Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post vote? The resolution on that first amendment to the tower lease with T-Mobile passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you. Amanda, you're back.
Thank you again. So tonight would be the third consideration of the Shadow Creek West rezoning. However, after our last conversation with the developer and council and the direction we received on the Warrior Lane assessment, staff is continuing to work with the developer on an agreement there that we think is a good solution. And we would like to bring that back to you at the July 28 meeting. So our recommendation tonight would be to table the third consideration and bring that back to you at the next meeting.
So the motion we're looking for is a motion to table to the July 28 meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote on tabling the third consideration? And then would clerk please post that vote? And so the consideration is tabled by a vote of four to zero. We'll consider that our meeting on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, you're up. What's happening with Green Belt Landing?
Get the presentation going here in a sec. Richard, you need to stop. It's already opened up.
Kind of the Amanda show today.
I'm okay with that.
I don't know if I should point out to Richard that it is 8:28 right now. Richard told me it would be a three-minute presentation.
My presentation would be three minutes, the questions will be the hour.
Con's just learning. He can ask as many questions as he wants. And he gets my three.
There you go.
All right, thank you. We just wanted to take a little bit of an opportunity to give the council an update on where we're at with Green Belt Landing, especially with Clive Festivals ticking off tomorrow and just some of the background work we've been doing for the last six months to a year to get it to a point where we're feeling pretty good. And we want to get a little bit more direction from the council tonight. So just a quick overview of what we're going to cover. Design updates, want to just show the latest renderings and some design of the key elements. We want to talk about estimated project costs, project funding status, where we're at with city funding, grants, and our private fundraising. Then we have a series of discussion questions. Then we have a series of discussion questions that we want to post to the council. And finally, just what's the timeline and what are some of our next steps? Before I jump into the presentation itself, I wanted to get these questions out here. So you can be thinking about this as we are going over this. The four discussion questions we have for the council tonight are, you'll see that there's increased costs. It's not, this is no surprise with all the construction projects we've been seeing here in the last year that costs are increased. So we have put together some potential cuts or items that we could delay on this. So we want to get your reaction to that. We originally had planned for this project to be two bids. We had that discussion with the council phased out like that. But we think it's worth looking at phasing this in one project to create some savings as well as kind of how the timing is working out. This is, the third question is one from Matt. Is the council willing to consider use of city funds for vertical infrastructure like the building and the stage? You'll see that some of the shortcomings we have here are in the areas that we haven't been able to do some private fundraising for yet. And then finally, you know, we've had some previous conversations about what percentage of the funding does the council want us to see secured before we allow this project to be bid? So four questions to keep in mind while I go through this and when we're talking through some of these things. So the first one is the design process and updates. Smith Group and Ask Studios and Venus Dream Kim have been working very hard. We're getting to the point where we're hoping to have our second and hopefully final submittal for site plan on August 19th. All the modeling on Walnut Creek has been completed and we now believe that the project can be constructed without impacts to the flood elevations. That's what's taken the most time to this point. And then finally, the DNR and Army Corps will be working on permitting of this. We expect that to take about 120 to 150 days based on their current time schedule. So just a few renderings and kind of overview. But this is the overview of what the project is going to look like. As far as the concrete, the dark areas will be replaced or added new at the aquatic center in the parking lot there. And you can see just an overview of all the elements with the new event lawn and stage, remodeling of the community building and then the key kind of feature here, which is the playground, stormwater, wetland and the boardwalk that'll wind through that area north of the current parking lot. First, we'll kind of jump into the community building renovations. So this is what you will see as you start to walk up to the building. Once the parking area has been remodeled, you can see the new covered patio that will sit just to the north of the existing building. The reason for it not touching the existing building is because of the ability to actually alter that roof line would have increased the cost substantially. So we'll have a new entrance there, but that roof line does sit completely separate. Also too, you can see in the rendering there on the right, we will allow people to be able to use restrooms from an outside area there that can be separate from the rest of the building.
Bring in some solar on this piece?
So one of the things we are evaluating is actually looking at solar for all three buildings when we do the re-roofing of the aquatic center. So we wouldn't at the time of this building remodel. But when we do re-roof the two aquatic center buildings in the next couple of years, we are going to evaluate that to see what the cost benefit would be of it.
So just building this with the strength of that roof line to put it, I mean, it looks like a perfect south slope.
Yeah.
For that, but you have to build it for, to be able to hold it later.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. So just a little bit, as you get a little bit closer, you hear you're seeking kind of a feel that people are going to get when they walk into that, the black glass door there is where people enter the building now. And then you have that fireplace that will be both sides when you walk up. And then when you, people use it from the patio and you'll be able to walk around to use the patio or walk into the building itself. This is flipped from the other side, so kind of see what the outdoor patio will look like from the other side of the fireplace and how you would look and feel depending on how we had that set up. Now we move into the building itself. So you can see here, we're on the east end of the building, looking west towards the kitchen area there. You can start to see some of the colors and kind of textures that they're using there, bringing in that color palette of the green belt and the city colors. We've taken a lot of input from renters and people that use this facility before on how that would be more functional. So in the space now, that little island is actually attached to the wall. And what we found is that creates kind of very difficult for circulation through there. So there is a separation between the wall and the counter now. There'll be outlets for crock pots and other ways people use this. And we're just trying to bring in those kind of earthy tones that really tie it into the green belt. You'll have the wood looking ceiling above it. You'll actually have a projector that will come out of the ceiling to allow, you know, different uses for meetings or presentations or just birthday parties and family reunions. Really a very nice space that I think is going to be much more inviting than it currently is. So next, kind of work our way over to the stage and festival grounds. So the image on the left shows, you know, just the graphic drawing of that, you know? And I know that can be a little bit disconnecting from how does that lay out now? So I drew an image on the right that shows how is that different than what things look now? And so I think maybe the best way to summarize that is the festival grounds compared to how we have them set up now will shift to the north a little bit. And then the area where kind of the city tent and lion's tent usually is at Clyde Festival will become the kind of north part of that new parking area there. And then you can kind of see how the trail will kind of slide behind the new stage and how that orients with the new patio in the area of the building.
Richard, could you bring back, this is only number two, I have three. Could you bring back the percentages of the aquatic center usage by public versus city, city events and programs and not tonight, but.
This space?
That building.
Oh, yeah.
How much is it used by city events slash programs? How much is it used by the public?
Yeah. Yep, we can do that. So kind of work our way now, this is what it'd look like from the festival grounds with the new stage that's going to be oriented to the east side of that. And then how it kind of relates to the, the building over there to the south. Now we kind of work our way up to the area for the wetland and the playground. So essentially all the area north of the existing parking lot will become improved stormwater features to treat all the water that comes from this site as well as a big chunk of the water that comes off of us Northwest 114th Street. Right now, all the water that comes off of these two areas goes strictly into Walnut Creek. So we're able to create a much better situation, cleaning the water before actually will hit Walnut Creek. So improving that situation and then balancing that out with having recreational amenities. So the playground just on the northeast corner, that's kind of the area where bounce houses are for Clyde Festival. And then that boardwalk will weave its way through the wetland and the existing woods out there. So this kind of gives you a feel of what it would look like once you popped off the parking lot, right before you jumped on the boardwalk and the playgrounds on the two sides. This is just a few images that we've been using to kind of represent the feel that we're wanting to get with the boardwalk. And what we want that to look like as it winds through that wetland in the woods. The playground, we haven't picked exact equipment or design out, but we want to get that feel of like you're in nature, you're, you're going down for a walk down to the creek. What type of elements can we put in there that meet modern playground standards? But give that kind of feel for people that it's almost like educational and interpretation of them getting into the woods and down to the creek. Just a couple placeholder images on how we could maybe use natural materials to, to really get that feel and get people that experience, especially for the kids that want to go out there and play. So now we jump into the estimated project costs. So last time we were with the council, I believe it was last November, we read an estimate about $9 million. And the two phases, the way they were broken down were $5.5 million for phase one, which included the community building, all the parking lot modifications, the boardwalk and all the wetland work. That was the, the phase one, and then everything else was in phase two. Now we've got an updated estimate of about $10.6 million for the project. So an increase of about $1.6 million since that time. That puts us at a phase one of about $6.6 million and a phase two of about 3.9. They're a little bit in there between there to get the total 10.6. Some of the things for the increases, inflationary costs with materials, a tight labor market we're seeing is causing some of those increases because contractors just don't have enough people to, to do the work. And then increased size of stormwater features to meet the needs of the project. So we've seen in order to meet some of the goals that we need to accomplish here, we had to increase the size slightly of the stormwater. So that has added a little bit of a cost to it, but not as much as the tightly labor market and the inflationary costs. So knowing that, you know, $10.6 million project is not one that, a buck that we want to be in. We've looked at ways that we could either maybe delay things or cut things from the project. So this is where we start to talk about, does it make sense to maybe bid this as one project, but give a contractor flexibility of time to complete that? We think that we could potentially save $100,000 in costs if we bid a project in one phase instead of the two. That reduces some of our mobilization costs. So contractors have, don't have to mobilize all their equipment out there twice. We kind of probably overdid it on some of the access points along the creek. We can scale that back, but still get the same experience. We can cut about $150,000 out there. We think that we can save up to $250,000 if we use staff and volunteers for the installation of landscape. That would certainly put a burden on our staff and organizing a lot of volunteers to do that. But we think that it's something that could be possible as part of that. The next one is, we think, one of the things we've talked about is if the city was able to work out ownership of that pond, the entire pond to the east of the site there, that we would potentially get rid of that existing overlook that doesn't provide any accessibility down to the pond itself. It just kind of sits there. But we could just leave that overlook there and that would save $50,000. We have some kind of really cool swing chairs along the boardwalk. We could eliminate them or we could do them as an add alternate to the project. So depending on what the cost and if we found a specific person to be interested in, in fundraising for those or donating for that, then we could add them in there. We also believe that with push kind of shove, the playground sits very nicely in there, but it's not dependent on anything else. So we could just have those two grass spaces and delay that until we actually found a donor for the playground. And then we could just put some of these items in here as bid alternates and seeing where the price came back for some of them. We can make that decision at that point as well.
On, on the existing pond overlook, is there any concern with the longevity or how that would wear compared to the rest?
No, no.
One of the big pieces with that, I remember too, Richard, was we were looking at doing an accessible pier there. Would it be an ADA accessible pier, which we don't have today?
Yeah.
For fishing. So there, and that's one to kind of like with the playgrounds, there are certain some components of this project that, you know, we're, we're hoping to find kind of is there a donor or somebody who would want to put their name on it, really move that component forward. There are some things like that that we can do in pieces. So it may not be that initial build. It could be coming back and you're doing that overlook and you're doing the playground at a, at a later time. And, and that could be more of a, a normal size scale city project. Again, it also could be, we have finally identified a donor. You know, we've had some, some opportunities on some of the playgrounds, on some donors that we've pitched on it. We haven't landed one yet. And so as, and that's kind of to that key question of like, what's the, what's the time period with it? In terms of percentage of funding that the council is comfortable of us pulling the trigger? Cause you're talking a two-year build. If you were to bid this as one project, kind of saving that mobilization cost, it's still going to take probably two years to, to build it all out. During that same time period, we're still hustling on the fundraising side. Maybe then we do find a playground donor and then we're able to maybe change order that in to the project or something like that, or even bid it separately as to be done after the, the main project is done. And so we're just trying to find those avenues, knowing that, you know, construction inflation is what it is. But knowing that we're not quite there, as you'll see on the funding numbers. But knowing that this has been an important project for the city and, and for the council to see something happening soon. At the same point, knowing that we're not quite all the way there yet. So I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit on Richard, but that's something to keep in mind as we're, we wanted to kind of come up with a realistic list that we could, you know, bring that cost down.
Question about one thing. I think we've talked about this before, but with the location of the playground so close to the creek. My experience in the country clubs, homeowners area is we had some design done for some very minimal things kind of at the east end of the lake and ended up not being able to do it because of floodway considerations. So I'd like to know, how close is this to the floodway? And we know that's probably going to flood in there.
Yep.
And so what are we doing to make sure that anything that does get built isn't getting ruined? You know, based similar to what we see along Flur Drive, they've spent a lot of money trying to keep things up along there. So I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, so pretty much this entire site is either in the floodway or floodplain. So that's something we knew going into the project. Based on all the modeling that we've done to this point, everything that has been shown to you here can be done without impacting the flood, backing up any water upstream of this. So their modeling has shown that we're able to do that. We've actually had to make some adjustments in some of the, the shoreline stabilization work that we want to do to make room for that so that we don't back up any water. Also, keeping in mind with that, most of the materials that we are trying to do here, the surfaces that we are putting together, we're designing with flood resiliency in mind. So for example, the, the boardwalk will have a steel substructure rather than maybe a wood one so that it can last better to being inundated occasionally. Instead of having a mulch surface for the playground, we're looking at a rubber surface that can be hosed off should we get a big flood. So we tried to keep that all in mind with all the, the kind of design work that we've done to date. But you're a hundred percent right. At times this is going to get wet, this may get muddy. But we're kind of planning with that in mind so that really most of the work that we're having to do is hosing it off, cleaning it off, brushing it, shoveling up mud, that type of stuff versus any other major structural damages to it.
The face of the aquatic center buildings is the floodway line. So everything north is in the floodway. It's just a matter of depth of how deep it is. So like when we had, for example, the 2015 flood event on Walnut Creek, we had water up to the curb in the parking lot, almost in front. We actually had water almost to the aquatic center building in the 2015 flood. So it is in the floodway. And that's to, to Richard's point, that was from the very beginning, we knew we were going to have to design this in a way to be resilient. And, and some intentionality that we took with the community center in particular and the patio of thinking about ways of using, and this is where we had to make up for some flood storage and some other spots, is the seating wall on the edge of the patio is almost like a flood barrier for the patio. So we're actually doing that in a way so we could actually slide in, if I'm remembering correctly, slide in some, some plates to actually protect the community center building and patio and the flood. Hope I'm not overstating it, but I'm.
Yes, you're correct. We've actually found probably a little bit easier solution, but yes.
Yeah, so that, so there was definitely some intentionality, knowing that there is going to be water on this site at some point in time.
Hopefully not frequently. There is a little shelter or something, not like enclosed or anything. But it was just very minimal things like that that none, none of that could happen at Country Club. So I don't understand how it can.
Yeah, I remember that too. And I know part of that, if I recall too, was there's the emergency spillway for the lake. That goes, so like Country Club Lake has emergency spillway that actually goes over Country Club Boulevard to the south of the dam and wraps around all that green space. So that ground is actually designed in a certain way that DNR required because it actually has to be emergency spillway if it ever went over the road. And again, I don't want to say that that was, I knew that was a huge hindrance to the association being able to really do anything with that ground because they couldn't build anything to get in the way of that emergency spill.
I just don't think everything was over there. There was some on the west side of the.
Was there?
Right, too, as I recall.
By the launch.
I should be wrong, but I just, yeah, I just remember being so surprised that we could not do anything. So I think we should make sure we continue to have that discussion.
Yeah, and, and all this design has been done in consultation with the DNR. So they have been brought along part of this design process. We have been reviewing things with them. It's just now that we'll submit the formal permit now that we've met that modeling guideline. So we'll get the official sign off on it. But yeah, we've been including them from the very beginning of this process. The next, I just wanted to jump into where we're at from a project funding status standpoint. So here's what we have from existing funding. We have about six point, almost $6 million in city funding for the project. We've got these four grants that are listed below here. We've got several private donations. One thing I do want to kind of note, you can't just add these up and that's how much money we have under the private donations because of the way we're working with the Clive Community Foundation. They've committed to fundraising $300,000. Some of these, some of these count towards that $300,000. So I don't want there to be confusion if you add this all up, this is how much we have. But I do want to really note the commitment and the contribution of the Clive Community Foundation. They have been amazing to work with. President Jane Fogg, Bob Forte, former mayor Sirxina, as well as Russ Van Oarsdale have been rock stars on this project, opening doors, going out to talk to. going out to talk to people on this, and we really couldn't be doing this without the work that they have been doing on this project so far. So that's why I wanted to point that out, even though A plus B doesn't necessarily equal C here on some of this. Um, we've got, uh, three key kind of first private partnerships here. They'll be coming forward to you for partnership agreements at probably in the next month to to six weeks. Um, and American Energy for the naming of the stage, uh, Community of Choice Credit Union's made a commitment up up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the naming of the patio. And then Nick Mick has provided a hundred thousand dollars for the development of public art on the project. Beyond that, we have approximately seventy five thousand dollars in private donations committed or pledged to this point. And then we have these three outstanding grants that have been submitted. Um, we're just waiting to hear back from them. So when you kind of put all that together, here's where we're at from a funding gap standpoint. Um, we have about nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars that we're short on the community building, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the the stage and festival grounds, the playground at six hundred and forty five thousand dollars, and then about two hundred thousand dollars at the pond improvements. So that kind of relates into some of the things that Matt was mentioning a little bit earlier there. You know, maybe we do as ad alternate with the pond improvements in the playground or delay them, depending on what those ad alternates are. But we feel like we're getting closer each day and we'll be rolling out a public fundraising campaign tomorrow night at Clive Festival. We've been working with Pete and a design team. We have a about a minute fifteen video that we'll just unveil tomorrow night between the first and second concert. So I'd hope you could all be out there and see that. The mayor will be kind of kicking that off and then we'll have the Clive Community Foundation there. Getting people talking about the project and encouraging them to donate, but we're feeling pretty good, but we still got some ways to go here. And I know this is where the discussion will come in about that vertical infrastructure, um, related to this.
Yeah, and this is something that, again, council doesn't have to give me an answer direction tonight. Something I want to put in your mind for an idea. So how we bonded for the city's portion, you go back to the funding side real quick. So the city, the city funding that was committed, the vast majority of that funding came from a tax agreement financing bond issue. So where we took the increment value of the hospitals up the street and had it dedicated towards a number of improvements that are outlined in the city's current urban renewal plan. The vast majority of this project, the stormwater improvements, the park improvements, were all identified in that urban renewal plan. As the council, uh, some of the, in terms of conversations we've had in the past, what we don't have in that urban renewal plan or where where it's a little harder to put city funding towards is vertical, vertical infrastructure. So the community building and the stage, but most importantly, I will focus on the community building. So I know in the in the past, there has been some concern from council on the usage of TIF funds for a city facility. What I would offer to you is that depending on how fundraising goes, um, some of these outstanding grant applications, uh, most importantly, you know, the Destination Iowa one, which is a little bit of a long shot, but definitely one we wanted to go after. We saw that as a potential for the community center, for the building itself. If I recall, Congresswoman Axnes's community projects is focused on the wetland.
Yes.
Focus on the stormwater components, so that is kind of committed to that piece. So I, we think we might be able to fill some holes in there. But we might end up having a gap on the community center. And it might require some shifting of the city funds to go towards the community center. But the only way we can do that is the current bonds aren't authorized to be used for vertical infrastructure. It would require an amendment to our urban renewal plan and for the council to have a consideration of using TIF funds for a facility. I know that's something that you haven't been a big fan of in the past, but we may need that flexibility to see this go through. I just would offer it up for your consideration. I think we're going to have more instances in the next few years, particularly next month, as we talk more about the Harbach Center and the future of that, where you may want to add, you may want to consider more than just the this community center, but also the Harbach Center as something that we could utilize tax agreement financing funded resources for city facilities. So just something that I want to kind of put in your mind on the table for something for you to think about. If we get to a point where that is our biggest hole, we're not able to secure a a naming right, you know, a major sponsor for that center, that community center upgrade that if if we have enough funding in the other areas where some of the city resources could shift around, that might be what fills the last gap to to make this project a reality. And exit, it is, it is very challenging to do that, the first phase, particularly the patio work, uh, which we already have one funding, a funding sponsor for without doing the building. So some of these things are interconnected. Again, don't have to to answer me today, just something that I would ask you to consider that we may need some flexibility to get this project moving forward. And it's a broader question that I want to introduce too, because I think we're going to have a similar discussion on the Harbach Center as as a potential funding source for maybe the city's portion, if we decide to keep that facility long term and do a major renovation of it, hopefully with funding partners and a similar kind of fundraising and grant opportunities, you know, for the Harbach Center and Lanan Park in the future. You know, we can use TIF funds, for example, for Lanan Park, but not necessarily for vertical infrastructure with the way it's laid out on our urban renewal plan. And of course, there's other state regulations that we have to comply with if we're using TIF funds for a city facility. So anyway, wanted to at least introduce that, um, tonight. Happy to answer any questions, but again, don't need an answer tonight, but it's something I'd ask you to consider.
Can I ask a question on those naming rights? How long are those for?
Twenty years. Yep.
Yep, the each of the sponsorship agreements that we will bring back to you have a term to one year term. From whence the project is accepted by the city. So that's when the twenty year clock starts, when the construction's completed and the city accepts the word. That's when the twenty year clock would start.
So now we're up to the discussion questions. So the four questions that we had before you, we want to get a little bit of feedback or your action to them and give us a little bit of direction so we can keep moving this project forward.
You you mentioned how if we if we kind of make it one project and sort of split into two phases, that'll save us, you know, that hundred thousand mobilization costs. If we delay some of these other items like the, you know, the the fifty thousand for the walkways and the playgrounds and that sort of.
Yeah.
Are we basically just shifting that cost down the road if we want to, you know, do that later where we're going to pay that hundred thousand premium there?
Certainly it's possible, you know, we can't predict what the future is going to be on that, but there's certainly a possibility of that.
So I guess we need to give some direction on that, so let's just go question to question. Are there any items that the council feels could be potentially cut or delayed? And maybe you want to flip to that?
Yes, I'll go back to that.
Or need more information on too, we know we're throwing a lot at you.
All right.
And it's been a little while since we talked about the project, so.
Did I miss it? Yep, sorry. Just a quick review of the photos again.
Anybody else getting dizzy?
Yes. All right, there we go.
Okay, so I guess the question is, are we comfortable with an approach like this where they'd have the flexibility to make these adjustments?
Generally speaking, my only concern is, you know, like that existing pond overlook not being ADA accessible. That, you know, that affects a a small portion of our residents more than, obviously more than the rest. So, I mean, especially for that dollar amount. I I I'm not sure I'd be on board with that, but the other ones, yeah.
Other thoughts? I'm surprised that thing is not, it's for the retirement home, right?
So I think, um, it is accessible to get out to it, but it's so far up above the pond level, that's what we're talking about from accessibility and to be able to fish and kind of have access down to the pond. So yes, to roll or slowly walk out there.
Goals was to to make the pond more accessible and it doesn't get down far enough. So it's it's ADA accessible to get there, yes.
Yeah.
It's definitely compliant at this point on that front. It is, one of our goals with that pond was to have access points to it and provide, it would be a unique, kind of a unique element for us is to provide that kind of ADA accessible pier essentially that you don't see in a whole lot of projects that we thought would make good sense, especially with the senior living facility right next door.
So absent that, are we supportive of the other types of delays or adjustments? Hearing none.
Yeah, we're just really looking for flexibility. Don't, it's not a final decision tonight by any means, but it's more of, we see this as some flexibility as we come back with the site plan, as we see how fundraising goes. And we'll talk a little bit about schedule, but we're really at the earliest, it would be if we're successful with some of these funding gaps, it'd be the winter before we'd be bidding it or maybe look.
Later than that, probably.
Fall.
Yeah.
In the best case scenario.
From a.
Just doing it in one phase in particular.
Yeah, so from a construction standpoint, we're probably looking at, you know, in earnest getting started in the spring of next year. And no matter whether or not we do it one phase or two phase, that's going to stretch through twenty three and into twenty four for sure. Um, and potentially, if you give a contractor some flexibility and latitude, you maybe you give them from twenty three all the way to the spring of twenty five, and that maybe helps to reduce some of the costs, you know, by not trying to pinch a contractor into very specific timelines as well.
We have to time it around the aquatic center operation. There's like the parking lot work we won't want to do in the middle of the summer when.
So you actually mentioned that like the aquatic center roof is probably going to be coming up in a couple of years. So are we basically just going to go from this project to that?
So that that's, that's strictly just a roofing project, so that's ripping the existing asphalt shingles off and re-roofing it because of those original shingles. So it's not, nothing nearly is in depth of doing this, a full remodel of those things, so.
To Michael's point, you know, we could potentially see solar added almost immediately after the the project's complete.
Certainly, yeah, certainly it'd be up to the council's decision, you know, one of the things, some of the things, we want to make sure if we would recommend something like that to the council is, you know, will the net metering still be available to put that power back into the grid? Because, um, the amount of power we need at the aquatic center isn't year round. And so, you know, if for some reason there were some changes to how that might work, you might end up with a lot of power that can't be used there for most of the year, it's a, you know, a hundred day operation. So we'll, we'll do all the research we can on those type of issues before we bring some sort of recommendation forward. But it's something we've already talked about, Matt and I've had a conversation about. It's a perfect opportunity, there's not going to be a tree to the south of those buildings ever, because you got a pool there. So it's never going to be blocked by by any sort of trees. So it's a, it's a great and really probably a really pretty perfect opportunity to do solar on that.
Right, do you want to go back to question?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick?
Yes, go ahead, Ted.
I'm fading fast here, but, um, can we go back to that screen?
Which one, the the? This one?
There you go, yeah. So I I just want to, I just want to make sure we're not trying, we don't eliminate things and and try to do this on the cheap, right? This is a signature project for us. And so, you know, if something needs to be delayed, so if the playground needs to be delayed for a a bit in order to get our financing right, that's, that's fine, but you know, like, I don't know what the creek edge seating means and 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 the the swing chairs along the boardwalk. But what what I, what I don't want us to do is is, you know, to nickel and dime this and try to save, save a little bit of money and then not not get the end product that we want. So, um, again, if if we need to delay something because we got to figure out the financing, that's fine. But, you know, if we come up with a design that we think is is what's best for this project and for the community, I think we need to go with that. The reality is, we're going to have higher prices. I mean, that's, hell, I get that every time I go to the grocery store, I mean, that's just. You know, we just got to figure it out, but so that's just two cents on.
And I would say, anything we've put on here will not impact the overall integrity of the project, the quality we're wanting to do. For example, with that creek edge seating, we, I think we had five or six locations where people would be able to get down to Walnut Creek easier through some rock scrambles or other things like that. We would just do two or three instead of five or six. So things like that, um, the delay, the the playground, um, that's something we can.
Do it, it just, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's more, Councilman Weaver's point is, we would, we would still do it as a part of the project.
Yes.
Question of when.
So items like that, based on some of the, what I'm hearing so far, we'd probably bid those as ad alternates when we do the bid and see where we're at from a funding standpoint and cost standpoint to see, do we just reject it and delay it until we can do it later, or can we find the money in during that time period?
Could we do that to some of these things that you're talking about eliminating too?
Yeah, we could probably do it for almost all of them, yeah.
And the, and the playground is even one, we had one donor that we were talking to about it that was in the construction industry. And there was a potential with that one, and we still have a chance with that one, it's not over yet. But, uh, that there would be some in kind that they may come and want to help build it, like their staff. And so like the playground, for example, is right here, what you're seeing is the cost of just the contractor builds the whole thing. We've done playgrounds with neighborhoods before where our staff has been alongside neighborhoods to build things, install things. You know, that's another thing that we're also angling on when we, when we go out and do some pitches on on some of these elements. The playground is one of them, is you could also have an in-kind element to that, um, that could help us get to the finish line on one of those two playgrounds or maybe both of them at some point.
And then in a situation like that, then the total cost is reduced by using that volunteer labor from an organization that may be interested in donating the cost for the purchase of the playground equipment. And then the value of the rest of it is their labor to help us install it.
Let's get Eric to bring the Boy Scouts down.
Need a lot of them.
Yep.
Is there the potential with playground that it could be done incrementally?
Yeah.
All at once?
Yeah, we could do, so the way it's kind of broken up is there's a smaller one kind of on the west side of the entrance to the boardwalk and a bigger one on the east side. So we could do one, two, one at a time.
I kind of like the idea of seeing how much it gets used to an extent, because this isn't in a neighborhood where kids are going to walk to it. It's going to have to be a destination. And I am hoping that everything gets used well, but that might be kind of a smart approach.
Yep, and it would be broken up like that from a bidding standpoint too. So playground A and playground B.
All right, sounds, sounds good on that. And then, uh, bid as two projects, what do you think about that, that versus one? Looking at trying to do it as one. Seeing if that works. Any objections?
Sounds like there's not going to be a substantial change to the timeline and a potential to save us money.
Yep. All right, I think we've got consensus on that. Now, what about the vertical infrastructure? Where are we on that?
And you may need more information on that one, I know, but that one's a, again, you don't have to.
Well, we'll skip that for the moment.
Direction.
Yeah.
How much money do we have to have in hand before?
Tell me the approximate percentage of where we're at today.
Eighty percent?
So we are probably in the neighborhood between seventy and eighty right now, between city funds, grants and pledges and money in hand from private donations. I think when we talked about it the first time, the council had talked about eighty-five to ninety percent pledge committed or in hand. So we just want to confirm if that's the way you want us to be before we bring this forward to the bid. Based on some of the permitting, things like that, we will have time to do additional fundraising now that we're just going public with that. So I'm confident that we're going to get pretty close, but we just wanted to recheck in with the council on that.
So out of the gaps that you'd identified on the other page and some of the cost savings that you identified, what, I mean, does that affect that percentage at all? Does that move it?
So, um, we put these funding gaps here based on those cuts. So the the building, the stage and festival grounds, the playground and the pond improvements. That's prior to us knowing if we're going to get those grants that we had on there, the Destination Iowa, the Axnes Community Projects, the, um, Polk County Grant, we're still going to be applying for other grants coming up here. So we believe that we will start to get some of these gaps closed here pretty quickly in the next two to three months. It's really, I think, the biggest, in my mind, the biggest question is going to come down to the community building and the gap that we have there. And can we cover that with, you know, part of the city funds? Or are we going to have to privately fundraise for that entire thing?
So I guess, so this doesn't count as an additional question, by the way. So I guess what I'm, I'm asking though is, you know, the the cost savings that we were just talking about. Is there any limitations, you know, going back to what Matt was saying about, you know, we can only use certain funds for certain aspects?
Yes.
Are the cost savings that we make on the, on that other slide going to translate into being able to get closer to closing these gaps? Or?
Those have already been figured into these gaps.
Okay.
So, you know, we we figured that we can do that in some way. Obviously, the playground is something we said we could delay, but for example, say, with the stormwater wetland components, we have quite a bit of city money to balance out those grants. If we get the five hundred thousand dollars for the Axnes Community Project, that moves up five hundred thousand dollars that can be pushed into one of these projects here. Yes.
Same with the Destination, Polk County Grant. A hundred thousand that that can replace where city funding other elements that are allowed use of, use of those funds today.
So you can't see this real well, but one of the things we're doing is we take all the cost estimates for each one of the project elements. We put in what can be funded, what's been funded for that, so we know where those gaps are on each one of those things to help us kind of to plug up where the missing gaps are.
I guess my question would be though, I'm a little confused. I guess my question would be though, I'm a little confused. Are we eighty, seventy to seventy-five percent of the way of the original project? Or we're seventy-five percent? There on. Whatever we want to scrap.
The ten point six million minus some of those things we talked about before, we're about the seventy-five to eighty percent.
The bigger number.
But but we're already taking into account the cost savings when we.
Yes. Yep.
So we're already taking out those things to get to that.
So we're sixty, fifty, sixty percent of the way of the original project.
Oh, no, you're probably, probably the original project, the only two gaps you would have at this point were.
Cost estimate.
Original cost estimate would be on the building.
Six, we're getting everything we want.
Yes, correct.
We're sixty percent of the way?
Oh, I think we're more than that. You know, you take out, if you combine it into one phase, plus the ci- the city funds, all the other grant funds, we're probably still seventy to eighty percent of the way there to.
Seven million.
Yeah.
In the account. Towards the ten point six.
We're probably closer to almost eight.
Yeah, we're getting closer to, we don't, I, I, we're always careful, right? Because we have a few of them that isn't. You know, signed on the dotted line, some of those fundraising commitments. We've received the checks on some of them and haven't necessarily approved the sponsorship agreement yet, which we appreciate. But that gets us closer to that eight million number.
So I think, you know, just maybe to walk through it real quick, if we're at ten point six million, you take off the six point five that the city has. You take off all those grants on top of that there, plus the private donations, we're getting pretty close on that seventy to eighty percent that we're there. We're, yeah. We're eighty-five percent according to Elizabeth's calculations.
Are we comfortable with that? Eighty-five percent? Green light? Okay.
I think for us, like one key one that gets us kind of that close to that ninety percent is that community projects, one Congresswoman Axie, I think. You know, that five hundred thousand would make me feel a little more comfortable.
Yes.
Because then also it frees up some city dollars, then we can have that conversation about where that shifts around. And so our hope is, again, later this year, hopefully by the fall, again, you can't guarantee a timeframe on things like that. But by the time we're ready to bid it, which again is probably the winter. And my time well with where the construction environment is at, too, maybe to get maybe some better pricing. Hopefully, we're at that ninety percent plus. By that point. So that's kind of what we wanted to get a sense from the council. If you're comfortable, if we're at that, the kind of ninety-ish percentage. Is, is that something where we can move the project forward, commit to it, start building it? Knowing that we've got a couple of years to continue to fundraise, you know, maybe we find a playground sponsor, maybe we find. Some other opportunities along the way. To get it done. And other grant opportunities, too. There's still some Prairie Meadows grant application. One is one we've tried at. They really focused on nonprofits this year. And social service programs, which totally understandable. That's another one we want to take another run at. We went after three hundred fifty thousand there previously. Still, you know, hoping to maybe get that, you know, look at that one. So there's still some grant opportunities out there, too, that we want to continue to pursue, even why the project is being built.
At the end of the day, can the city pay the delta, though? I mean, that's all I care about is that I don't want to hear that we're ninety percent built and we have no roof. And, you know.
Come up with a million dollars.
Pond is halfway built. No water in it.
We can come up with a delta if, if you, if we're able to provide the flexibility and how city funds are used. Because the trigger. On the building. Is, again, state law, vertical infrastructure, anything above seven hundred thousand. Is now a general corporate purpose. Activity. Which either has to be amended in an urban renewal plan with a reverse referendum or a referendum. To fund, because it's a city facility. So again, that's where that flexibility piece comes in. Can we fill, fill the hole? You can find the resources prior to those in our debt service levy and other things to do that. It's the question of how the funds are used. There's some state law requirements that we have to. Consider there. That's why I bring that up.
But we've, we've got some time.
Yeah, we do have.
Yes.
We do have time. The issue, the question of the vertical infrastructure, again, there, we've got some made, if we find out, we get five hundred thousand or we get a million. I mean, that. So maybe we can just wait on that question.
Right. Yeah. And that's why I said I don't need an answer today. I just want to introduce the subject.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Richard?
Just a couple of quick timelines of what you expect next year. So I hope you can all come out Friday and Saturday. We're going to announce the, the public fundraising campaign. We'll provide this direction to the design team. We are aiming to get the site plan submitted to Amanda and Community Development here by August nineteenth. Which puts it on your calendar for approval of the site plan on October thirteenth. So we'll see you again in October at that time. Hopefully, we'll be able to give you a much better update on how close we are and on each of these elements and have been hopefully be able to revise things just a little bit. So we'll have better answers.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Three minute presentation.
Absolutely.
Pete, we'll start with you. Nothing to share this evening.
Very good. Shrikan, a couple of quick things. Met with the Clive Historical Society. They've got a lot of, you know. Work ahead of them, good work, but it's gonna, it's gonna take some volunteers, it's gonna take some. Maybe some rebranding, we'll have to see, but we're trying to get creative with that. So. Hopefully, we'll get, we'll get some participation and get some volunteers and build that, build that to where it needs to be. I did attend a DART meeting as an alternate. I'll let, like, talk about that. And then just real quick, I just want to thank Richard and Jeff because they. Took time out of their day to take me around to the different parks and then also show me the facilities for public work. So appreciated that. That's, that's it.
Very good. Ted, are you still with us?
Still here, but I have nothing.
All right, then. Let me look back to flood control for a minute, just to make sure we're all on the same page on on CRS. What I was hearing was that there was. A sentiment on the council to continue talking about it. And Susan suggested that maybe strategic planning would be a time to look at that again. So thoughts on that?
I'd, I'd like to continue forward. I mean, I'd like to get the community involved and, you know, have some more of those meetings, maybe, but. Yeah, I, I would agree with that as well. Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's strategic planning. We can discuss the strategy. You know, I know Councilor Weaver brought up, you know, the, the broader question of the two foot BFE across the city.
Right.
I think what we'll want to do at a staff level is get your directions strategic planning on. With this decision, I, where do you, where do you want us to go next or not? On that. That, and so then we can work from there. So at this point, we'll, we'll be ready for that conversation in August.
I suspect also in. Maybe that, not, not that quick a timeline, but with the work Doug leading with Second Silverjacket project and then. Some ongoing work with, that we're doing with Stan Tech, we'll have additional data points that'll help us further into the future, what this risk actually looks like for the community. That'll be able to form discussion.
That'd be helpful to have, I think. Wanted to mention just one thing from our Metro Advisor Council meeting this week. I know you'll be shocked by this, but a number of the communities reported a high incidence of problems with fireworks. In fact, the register reporter. Asked for recording of the meeting with everyone complaining about fireworks. So you may see something in paper about it, just his heads up.
We actually was picked up on it.
Yep, they caught it. They caught it.
They put it in their, one of their dailies, I think, two days ago, the day, the next morning.
The next morning?
Yep.
Okay, not surprising. So we, we're not alone. Susan?
I want to mention that I am really enjoying using the Clive Pool Pass that I bought at the Clive Historical Foundation fundraiser. And I'm just so impressed with the way everybody works at the pool. So I'm enjoying that a lot.
Make sure to give my two sons some harassment while you're there because they're lifeguards.
Oh, I'm sure they are part of what makes it so great. So. The other thing. Just with the conversation about the. Triad project and everything. I, I know you saw, I raised some questions about how we were communicating with the Clive Community Foundation and. I really am happy with how that was addressed and has been improved. I just really encourage the council to do everything you can to engage with that. We're about to start the public fundraising campaign. Please look at being a part of it. And one really simple thing to do, if you haven't already, is sign up to do the. Block run that Nick Mick's about to do, the Battle of the Burbs. We should have it. I mean, it should be a no brainer that everybody on the council should at least buy a ticket whether you can go or not. And it'll go a long way to reinforce our working with the community foundation because they have really gotten behind that. And it has been a great way to generate some funds to support the project. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. In case anyone needs reminders. Michael? I will mention one thing on Dart in a, Shrikan has another takeaway to fill in, but. It was a long discussion this last week, this week, Dart. On the extension of their service, how far out they would go, would they retract that due to some federal laws? That they have to follow, that they're actually giving rides outside of our area. That we have to, to give increase of cost, you know, to some of those outside areas. It's a, it was a. A fairly in-depth discussion with most of the board on how that should work and if we should. Even retract more inside our cities like Clive. I threw up an idea for Clive that I'd like to be part of their. Oh, I can't remember what the program's called, but it's basically a, a door to door program where you can just call and get a ride instead of waiting for. The bus. They're doing it in Ankeny and rolling it out to West Des Moines. I had mentioned that what better place than a sliver of Clive? To take care of all of Clive that way. And it would be almost like an Uber service. And it's working in Ankeny really well, that it does the second bus. They're about to add a third bus for that. They got an app, you just order it, they come get you within, I think. Right now, the turnaround time is about eighteen minutes. Wow. And it takes you direct within the city to your next location. Ankeny, West Des Moines got that first for a reason as a pilot. And I think Clive should get it next because you could almost remove all the Dart out of Clive if you did that, right? Maybe it could be just passerby because you'd be getting instant, anyone in Clive would get instant service within that eighteen minutes to take you anywhere. So. Anyways, it's not something I'll sign this up for without talking to you all, that's for certain, but I think it's a great opportunity. And we're, the, the group is pushing harder and harder on right sizing the buses still. They don't think it's at the right level at this point still. There was unbelievably no discussion this last meeting about the new facility. Which I don't know if that was purposeful or not. But that is, continues to be a giant challenge for this board to do that. I will give you another one on WRA. I just a snippet. EJ Givinetti and Jody Smith have me sandwiched in this committee with them. I think I'm the sacrificial lamb of this group. But they are working on the governance of the agency as well as the operating agreement, which are two different things. So the operating agreement's always been with the city of Des Moines. They're actually. Suggesting that we go out for bid. On that as an agency and have hired outside legal counsel for WRA's board. To represent the board on this issue as well as to represent the board for a new governance. Which they're thinking is going to be much like MWA and Dart. Dart was mirrored after MWA. They're thinking WRA may need to move to that within the next two to three years. That's all unfolding lightning speed with those two guys at the helm. I'm just there for the ride. It's the three of us and then Des Moines representatives on the other side.
What would be the best?
Of opening up. Well, right now, there's a lot of, we, there's. Cost savings on the employee side. We're carrying a very heavy load on the Des Moines employee. A piece more so than we, we would need. A lot of our WR employees are then going to do snow removal inside the city of Des Moines in the winter, right? But yet still being paid by WRA. So they're keeping it a heavier load to do those things. Security is always all being done by the Des Moines Police Department. At all the facilities at a hu- higher load than what the studies show need to be done. So they're just trying, and I think what really came to the push was when somebody, I don't remember who asked. Who was in charge? I think I mentioned that at one of the council meetings, who was in charge of the WRA? And somebody said Scott, and they said. Good answer. He is our executive director. And. A member of the city of Des Moines said, no, no, Scott Hutchins, I mean, Scott Sanders. But there's a lot of confusion on, is the chair of the board of WRA really under the executive dr- or oversee the executive director? Is it Jonathan Gayno? Is it Scott Sanders? Is it the city council of the city? And the rest of the board is a puppet? That whole discussion is being played out right now at the WRA meetings and subcommittee meetings. Des Moines is loosely open to it all. As they were with Dart. But I think they see the. The train moving. It's an interesting dynamics that I think only Jody Smith and EJ Givinetti can pull off.
Does it take it out from under Ipers then?
No, it would not. So, you know, Metro waste is an Ipers. Dart is a federal, I don't think they're Ipers. It might be Ipers. Let's check, but they can.
Where does the savings come from then?
Mostly in staffing and the billing on how it's being billed between, well, it would get into the sewer rates and all that.
So is that you can get by with less?
Much less.
The WRA supports a lot of overhead city Des Moines.
Correct.
That you wouldn't necessarily need to operate the WRA independently.
That's the biggest piece. And so they're saying they're not going to get, and I believe this, and if I'm, if I'm, I'll be chair next year. If it goes as it's going, you know, as it's been going, I would support that as well, not getting rid of any employees, absorb them. And then let attrition take care of things, right? And refocusing on not to get rid of any employees. But the overall in general. Between paying for legal counsel, some marketing, everything going through the city of Des Moines. Is quite high when they, they've spelled it all out on the spreadsheets and things. I think they've actually shared it with the city managers as well. Very good. Anything else? Oh, Dart on demand is that point?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. You want to wind things up tonight, Matt?
Sure, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. Hope to see y'all at Clive Festival over the next couple of days. Hopefully, fingers crossed, the weather cooperates, might be a little steamy tomorrow and hopefully a little nicer on Saturday. I'll let the council know my fate on Sunday night. If I have jury duty here or not next week, find out. So we'll try to make do as best I can if I'm serving my civil, civil duty. And then lastly, I wanted to mention appreciation to Michael and Metro Waste. We're setting it up and Pete's been working with Michael's staff on this to have your strategic planning workshops, the in-person ones that are in the middle of August. At the education center at the Merf. So. They've offered it for all their member cities to use it, and we're going to take it and you're going to. Get to see the education center and we'll have the meetings there. As Michael knows, one key requirement will be the comfortable chairs. That the mayor, I'm sure, will be asking about. So.
There's a story there. We'll tell you later. As a board member of Metro Waste, we bring his chair with him when we're, when we're involved.
So look for, appreciate having that opportunity. And I think it'll be good to, to get offsite and have a little different place than what you're used to. So that will be happening in August. More details to come and we'll figure out food. That's all I have, Your Honor. Unless there's any questions.
I'm guessing at nine twenty-nine, there would not be any questions. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening?
Yes, I gotta.
It's not even funny at this point. We'll adjourn at nine twenty-nine. Thank you all.